Good evening. It is 6:31 September 18, 2024. Welcome to the regular session of the Planning Commission of the City of Westminster. Clerk, if you can call and roll, please.
Commissioner Buie?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamadeh?
Here.
Commissioner Rose?
Here.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Here.
Chair Wolpert?
I am here.
Chair, you have a quorum.
Fantastic. If you join me, we'd like to salute the flag together. Please stand. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Agenda item number three, report from the Planning Secretary on any late communication items.
We do not have any.
We have none tonight? Fantastic. Item number four, ex parte communications. This section is intended for, uh, to allow all officials the opportunity to reveal any disclosures regarding site visits or ex parte communications about the public hearing and regular business items. Do we have any ex parte communications from commissioners tonight?
Yes, yeah, I do, Chair. Yes, I did meet with the Assistant City Manager and the Contract Principal Planner yesterday to go over tonight's agenda. And I also visited the proposed Starbucks site and the church site.
Yeah, I have a chance to meet some of the people of the city two days ago to review the plans that we are going to review today.
I also, I also got to meet with the Assistant City Manager and people from the Planning Department. Uh, so I'm briefed on what we're going to be discussing this evening.
I also met with city staff on Monday to talk about some of the agenda items on tonight, the Assistant City Manager and, um, lead planning. Any others? All right.
Chair, excuse me just a second. Um, maybe staff, our small auxiliary speakers on the dais are not working and it's hard to hear without them. So maybe our tech, tech crew in the back could help us with that or...
There's probably a magic button somewhere that somebody will push. They're definitely not on. Please stand by for technical difficulties. All right, we will move on to agenda item number five, which is special presentations. I don't believe we have any tonight, so we'll move on to agenda item number six, oral communication. Clerk, if you wouldn't mind reading the procedure into record.
This is a time of the meeting that members of the public may address the Planning Commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Members of the public wishing to address public hearing items shall do so at the time of the public hearing unless extended by a majority vote of the Planning Commission. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. To address the Planning Commission, please complete a blue request to speak form that is provided at the entrance to the council chambers and submit the form to the Planning Commission clerk. When your name is called, please step to the podium at that time and state your name and city of residence for the record.
And do we have any blue speaker forms tonight?
We have one for item 8.1.
Okay, for a public hearing item, but nothing for oral communication?
No, no, no.
All right, if that's the case, I would like to go ahead and close oral communications. We'll move on to item number seven, approval of minutes. Do we have any motions?
I'd move approval of August 7, 2024 and August 21, 2024, regular meetings.
I think, do we need to approve those individually on August 7th or we can approve them both at the same time?
You can approve them both at the same time.
Fantastic. I second that motion.
Commissioner Buie?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamadeh?
Yes.
Commissioner Rose?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
And Chair Wolpert?
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0.
Excellent. We will move on to agenda item number eight, which will be our public hearings. And if you wouldn't mind terribly just reading that official statement into the record, please.
Anyone wishing to speak on an open public hearing should complete a blue request to speak form that is provided at the entrance of the council chambers and submit the form to the Planning Commission clerk. When your name is called, please step to the podium and state your name and city of residence for the record. Each attendee will have three minutes to comment on each public hearing item. The applicant or their designee will have 12 minutes to speak and will also be provided a three-minute rebuttal with exception of the applicant or designee. All attendees may only speak once. The Planning Commission may use its discretion to allow a speaker to exceed the allotted time or may ask a speaker to return to answer additional questions.
Great. We will start off with agenda item 8.1, case number 2022-0379, a conditional use permit and also the development review. I will go ahead and turn it over to planning staff.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. My name is Sandy Kim and I'm Associate Planner. I am here, here tonight to present planning case number 2022-0379. The requested entitlement involves a conditional use permit and a development review. The project site is located at 14072 Chestnut Street and identified by accessories parcel number as 096-112-23. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to legalize an existing religious place of worship per Westminster Municipal Code. Going forward, the project will be referred as a temple. The existing temple occupies a 9,776 square foot, two-story building. The hours of operation is 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. daily. The applicant is also requesting a development review to renovate the entire property. The property improvements include a new temple design, reconfiguration of the existing parking lot, and refurbish and enhance existing landscape areas. Further details of the proposed product, property improvements will be discussed in the slides coming up. The project site is located near northeast corner of Chestnut Street and Plaza Street. The subject parcel is 22,200 square feet in size and is developed with a two-story, 9,776 square foot building with 30 onsite parking spaces. The surrounding land uses consist of commercial and multifamily residential uses with the mixed-use 36 zoning districts to the north, east, west of the project site. And the city's neighborhood park, Sigler Park, is located just south of the project site. This is an existing view from the corner of Chestnut and Plaza Street. The main driveway and building frontage are located along Chestnut Street. This is an existing front view from Chestnut Street. The temple purchased the property in 1999 and based on the applicant's project description, the temple opened its center in 2000, in year 2000, to the community for meditation and cultural classes such as Vietnamese language and martial art classes. Here is an existing image of the subject temple from Plaza Street or side elevation. The property is currently enclosed by the existing block wall. The temple's regular hours of operation is 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. every day, but the main prayer services offer only on Sundays from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Another ancillary uses include Vietnamese language classes and martial art classes, which are offered only on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. The temple does not offer any services Monday through Thursday except for temple is open for cleaning and administrative office work. The proposed sighting, sighting enhancements include the new wrought iron gate at the main drive entrance, widen the existing two-way drive aisle to 25 feet per city standard, add six more parking spaces to existing parking, add a new bike rack, trash enclosure, and concrete open space. Lastly, the temple proposes to refurbish existing landscape areas with new plants, trees, and decorative harscape and irrigation as needed. The proposed temple design depicts the traditional Daoism temple from Vietnam and is shown on the lower corner of the slide. The proposed architectural design includes two towers and balconies with bright colors. Additionally, the project includes new entrances and balconies to front elevation similar to original design of Kao Dai Temple. I have, the applicant provided the materials bore. I have it at the front and I could pass it around for your observations. The tower element, elements are proposed at 53 feet, whereas the code allows maximum height of 60 feet. The main temple will remain at 29.5 feet in height. The existing 7,776 square foot temple consists of two floor levels. The main sanctuary is located on the second floor and is about 33,350 square feet in size. The main sanctuaries are also referred on the floor plan as main hall, Father God player room, or Mother Goddess chapel. The language and martial art classes are offered on the fourth floor in the multipurpose room. The project includes a new kitchen, elevator, lobby, offices, restrooms, and other ancillary rooms are proposed. Land use assessment. The proposed religious place of worship is a permitted land use with approval of a conditional use permit per municipal code. The parking code requires one parking for every 100 square feet of the main sanctuary. Therefore, the temple requires total of 35 parking spaces and the project provides 36 parking spaces. The proposed temple use is consistent with, with the city's general plan and zoning code. The development assessment. The proposed property enhancements includes exterior building design, landscaping, parking, trash enclosure, bike parking, and widen the drive aisles. Property improvements conforms to the city's development standards such as the required parking and landscaping. More of a project design is consistent with the city's general plan and zoning code. It is staff's recommendation that the Planning Commission approve the planning cash, case number 2022-379 with recommended conditions of approval. This concludes my presentation and I can't answer any questions that you may have. And additionally, my applicant and their team is in the audience to provide additional specific questions regarding the temple's operational characteristics. Thank you.
Do we have any questions specifically for city staff at this time?
Yes, yes, I do, Chair.
Go ahead.
Yes, Sandy, in, in working with the applicant, was there any discussion on the south elevation and how it would be treated? The, the current south elevation seems to have, it looks like two architectural elements running along the top and, and the middle. And in the elevations provided, those are gone and now we just have a large blank wall. Is that, is that what's proposed?
That is what they're proposing.
Okay.
And I have included a condition of approval to enhance the elevations to provide better screening of the rooftop equipment and to have a more consistent design all throughout the four sides.
Okay, so there would be some additional architectural detail provided?
Correct.
Okay, and that's great. Leave that up to staff to figure out. Thank you.
Chair, may I have a question?
Absolutely.
Would like to have asked you about the executive summary. Use, use the term legalize, the second word. Approval of conditional use permit to legalize the existing religions. Can you use any other term instead of legalize? It seemed that you used legalize to mean it was not legal. Check it, please.
Okay. The temple was established in year 2000 without obtaining a conditional use permit. The applicant did come in 2016 and obtained a conditional use permit at that time to operate the temple. However, that entitlement expired, so they're back.
And if I may add, Commissioner Buie, thank you for that comment. The term legalize is really used more in the terms of bringing the, the current use into compliance with current land use regulations today.
Okay, I agree. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I do have one question.
Go ahead.
What year was the existing building built?
I believe it was built in 1960s. And the staff report includes the specific year, I believe.
I was looking for it. I didn't see it, so I apologize if it's in there. The, my only question is just regarding the towers. I know that they are going to fall well within the code allowance, but just the, um, structure, that it can support the size of the towers, that, that there has been a full review or that the foundation will be addressed before putting on 53-foot towers, so...
Agreed. Once the project is approved with the land use, the next step is for the applicants to provide construction set of plans, which will provide the height and type of material that will be used and what type of foundation structural calculations would support that structure. So that is part of the required building code.
Okay, I figured. I just wanted to ask to make sure that that was asked. Thank you.
I have one question. There's a couple of existing towers on the building now, is that correct? There's no towers at all. What's the maximum, what's the current height of the building?
Current height of the building is 29 feet.
29 feet?
Yeah.
Okay, so 29 feet tall and they're proposing the maximum be all the way up to 53. Legal limit is 60, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and the towers according to plan are not functional? There's no staircases? There's nothing inside? Is it meant for human traffic going up and down these towers?
I have discussed that with the applicant and perhaps they could provide more specific activities that could happen.
I didn't know if they had provided that level of detail yet. All right, any other questions for city staff?
Yes, Chair, I, yes, I want, um, back to the exterior elevations. So I do, do notice in the conditions of approval, it talks about the applicant shall provide an alternative roof design that includes a complete parapet to screen all rooftop equipment and prior to the issuance of any permit. Is there something else here that talks about the south elevation itself?
No, not specifically to the south elevation. However, if you would like to modify the, the drafted recommended conditions of approval, perhaps you could make those adjustments.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Another question. Did you have a chance to send the announcement to all people residents within, at that area so that they can come to bring their concern about the, the new renovation here?
Yes, the project has been notified 500-foot radius of, from the project site and to, it was mailed to all property owners and tenants. And we did not receive any comments objecting or supporting.
Okay, thank you.
All right, if there are no other questions for staff, I'd like to go ahead and open the public hearing. Start with the applicant, if that works.
We have...
I assume we have some speaker cards as well for this agenda item 8.1?
We have one, one person, Lan Nguyen speaking in favor of the item.
Okay, but that's not the applicant, correct?
No.
So the applicant's gonna get...
That is the applicant.
Oh, it is.
Lan is the applicant. Sorry, that is the applicant.
Perfect, and we can queue up there. It's 12 minutes for the applicant, if I'm not mistaken. I want to queue him up and have him come up and we'd love to hear from you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Wolpert, and Commissioner. My name is Lan Nguyen. I'm the attorney representing the applicant, Thao Di Pho Do, who would represent a Kao Dai religion in Vietnam. With me here today is Mr. Johnny Chan, who is actually representative for the applicant, and also our architect, Mr. Francis Ang, who's here. I'd like to invite you to come up just in case you have some more questions. And also along with us, we have many follower from the Kao Dai religion temple here. We're very excited to see the, the coming, of the approval of the project in the making. They've been working, looking forward to that. And speaking of the, the project today, the project here does basically add in, uh, it doesn't add up as square footage, but it does add the function to make it safe, to make it compliant with the building code, to make it all in, in, in a compliant condition. What the tower you see out there, there is more like a facade. It, it doesn't have a function. There's no one going up there. But it does make the shrine, called temple sometime, but it's actually a shrine in the belief of the religion here. It, the tower, it is the worship space to God. That's direct communication with God. That basically symbolize. So it does add to the beauty of the building itself and to the, to the region, to the area. And it, as in this area, there's many religious institution around that and this, the add to the variety of the religious institution in this location. And we have been working with the staff over a long time and she, Mrs. Kim in particular, has been very drawl in terms of analyzing and in terms of working with that. We appreciate her patience and her diligence in working with that. But I think that's big volume to the staff of the city of Westminster and make sure we had the best building structure and sort of add to the cultural value of the building, the project itself. So I really thank you for taking a review of this project and I, I do add for your support of this project here. And I'm open for any question you may have. As we have all the best architect here and also my kind representative, he can answer any question you may have.
We will, we'll take your remaining nine minutes and open it up to questions if you have any questions specifically for the applicant.
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Chair. I have question regarding the status of the organization. Is this a non-
Is this a nonprofit, 501(c)(3) and is it a membership or non-membership? And is it open to the public or the public without any constraint?
This is religious nonprofit. It is special kind of a nonprofit institution. It is a religious institution. It's open to anyone who believe or even not believe in the religion. It does have function, there are members or public coming in and out. It does have the Vietnamese language school there. They may have some martial arts school there. Of course, it's open to everyone who take the children there. So for a long time, it has been the centerpiece of a cultural institution here. In fact, it was applied at a cultural center here. Now to, I appreciate Commissioner Bowie mentioning the real life. It does do to bring to code because it is actually a religious shrine. It is now a religious institution. So it does have other requirement. It does try to, the change in this project is only to bring to code, to sort of model, to modify, to support the existing function of the temple or the shrine here itself. It doesn't add to a new facility, any function, but it does support whatever's going on. So that's where we, we here today. To go back to your question, yes, it is open to anyone, believer or not, but I think this is, after all, it is a religious institution. It does open to the worship place for the believer.
Yes, I have a question. As a resident of Westminster and also a member of the planning commission, it's always wonderful to see organizations that are willing to invest in our community and improve their property. And this will be a substantial investment. It'll add some real cultural diversity. It'll be a very unique building and a fine addition to our community. It also happens to be just across the street from one of our parks and your south elevation is visible from that side. So I'm wondering if you would have any objection or your group would have any objection to working with staff to see if we couldn't add maybe some beautification to the south elevation as well?
As a good neighbor, we always open to that. Of course, I mean, if any, if the staff had a recommendation, we try to be as good neighbor as possible. And the shrine itself has been receiving a lot of accommodation from the neighboring religious institution. So it's now time to kind of accommodate that and reciprocate that and then we, of course, we always open for that.
Okay, thank you.
May I have another question?
Sure thing, go ahead.
I know that the Khao Dai temple is next to a church and there's many church around that area. Do you, in the past, do you have any problems in major events, celebration? That people have problems with parking because next to it is a big parking for the, the sickle park. And do you have that problems and you, how many major events that Khao Dai will expect to have a year and how do they solve the problem of over-parking in the facility by itself?
From what I know, this religious shrine does not have that many event throughout the year, they have only number. But whenever they have it, for some reason, the timing is not in conflict with the regular timing of other religious institution. So they always accommodate each other. And from what I heard, that the surrounding religious institution and they always accommodate, so there's not be a problem. But this one also next to the public park itself, so, so there's some space with that. But so far, over the parking problem, it is, is not an issue to this particular shrine over the years.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? I just have one, specifically on the height of the towers, 53 feet. It's kind of an interesting number. Is that specific to the religion? Is there a reason why that particular height or would the tower still function at 40 feet? Or do you need the seven extra feet to get up to 60? Just trying to get an idea of why that specific height was picked.
I leave it to our architect to answer the question.
Talking about architectural, we are trying to create an image that is built with the heart of the people coming, coming to the church. We are refugees. We came here with hopes and we bring with us the image of the spiritual house that our parents went to and took us to. So this, this building, I'm just trying to create an image that resembles the old church or temple that people have, came from. So the towers, like Sandy had shown the pictures, imitate the main shrine in Vietnam. And here they also have a kind of template regulation. So as far as the meaning of the towers, in the original temple, there were some meanings, but here we are just trying to create an image and the height is just because of the portion of the building, yeah. And I'd like to answer Vice Chair Anderson's question. It's a, an empty space, basically. It's just for the image of the tower.
And I should want to add to that is the, the real model, the image itself is to try to be replica of the original temple in Vietnam, which is iconic for this religion. So they try to make it, it look like the original as much as possible within the limited space and square footage and the money itself. Because the tower in Vietnam is all hand carved or the design thing, we can't do that anymore. We can't bring artists over here to do that thing anymore. So, but they're trying to do that because it's a, it is a point of pride to the follower. If they, if they go to the worship place in this, in exile, this particular religion is, is in exile from the original church in Vietnam. So they want to bring back as close to the home as possible and that's what they're trying to do. In terms of a worshiper, the membership is not that big a number. This is not a big shrine or temple, but they're trying to do their best to make it look like the original iconic temple in Vietnam as possible. That's why it look a little bit different, but it is, like the architect said, it is facade. It is nothing, there's no bell tower either, there's no one going up there, there's not traffic or anything going up and down that tower.
Excellent. All right, I think we're out of time on you. Thank you so much for, for your time. Any other speakers tonight for this agenda item?
No.
Okay. All right, if there are no other speakers, I would like to go ahead and close the public hearing on item 8.1. Commissioners, do you have any input, any comments?
Yeah, I think this would be a great addition to our community and understand what their interest is in doing and they want to replicate to the extent possible, the actual temple, which I think is, is great. And my only suggestion would be to add a condition that staff work with the applicant to give some architectural definition treatment to the south elevation. And I'm looking at the original temple and I see that's very elaborate. We're not looking for anything to that extent, but something that would be more, I think, interesting, visually interesting to both the, the people who attend the temple and to the community, to do something with that south elevation. And I would be happy to leave it up to staff and, and the applicant to work that out.
With those conditions, I'm making a motion approval.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Hamadi and a second by Vice Chair Anderson to approve the resolution with the conditional amendment to have staff work with the applicant on the south-facing rooftop line of the parapet.
Wall.
Wall, for a little bit more architectural beauty.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, on the south-facing?
I'll let Vice Chair Anderson.
Yeah, the south elevation of the building, that they would work with the, staff and applicant would work together on developing an architectural, some architectural enhancement on that south elevation to, I think, improve the appearance. And again, it's for both the parishioners and the community at large.
Okay. We have a motion made by Commissioner Hamadi, seconded by Vice Chair Anderson to adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Westminster, California, recommending the Planning Commission approve case number 2022-0379, conditional use permit to legalize an existing religious place of worship and development review to enhance the overall condition of the property, including landscaping, parking, and building design on property located on 14072 Chestnut Street, Westminster, California, 92683, 8pm, 096-112-23, to include the condition that staff work with the applicant to give, on the applicant, on the south-facing elevation of the building to develop architectural enhancements." Commissioner Bowie?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Rose?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Chair Wobert?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0.
The commission's action on this item shall become effective 15 days after the decision date identified in the notice of decision. The applicant and/or any other interested party may file an appeal of the commission's action to the city council. The appeal must be in writing and filed with the city clerk within the previously mentioned 15-day appeal period.
Thank you. We will move on to agenda item 8.2, case number 2024-0024, conditional use permit. I will turn it over to city staff. After our friends say goodnight. Thank you, folks. Thanks for joining us.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair and Commissioners. My name is Jarfor Anjbar, Associate Planner. This next, next item before you is a request for a conditional use permit for planning case number 2024-0024, an application for a conditional use permit on property located at 16388 Beach Boulevard. The project is located within multi-tenant commercial site Pavilion Place Shopping Center on Beach Boulevard. Red line shows the city limits at the edge of the city of Huntington Beach on north and west side of the site. Starbucks and Chick-fil-A are already in this shopping center and due to expansion of the business, they are relocating within the same shopping center. Chick-fil-A is moving to former Mary Callender site and Starbucks is relocating to Chick-fil-A building. The project is within C2 zoning district, the general business. To the north and west is developed with shopping centers, restaurants, and a hotel in the city of Huntington Beach. To the south is developed with an elementary school zone, public, semi-public district, and awakened lot which is zoned for multifamily residential. To the east is developed with, with single-family homes in R1 zoning district. The general plan designation is regional commercial. The proposed use would occupy a freestanding drive-through building in a multi-tenant commercial shopping center with a total area of 7.7 acres. The space is currently used as Chick-fil-A drive-through restaurant. The applicant requests to operate late-night hours for new cafe Starbucks at this location. The proposed hours of operation are from 4:00 a.m. to midnight. And based on demand, the cafe may operate its drive-through lane on a 24-hour basis. Per Westminster Municipal Code, a cafe is permitted by right when it operates within the hours of 6:30 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday and 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. A cafe is permitted to operate beyond these hours of operation with the approval of a conditional use permit. This is the site plan for the project and the freestanding building and the drive-through lane are shown and the length is enough for 11 cars. Surrounding the building are parking spots and also note the driveway access from Beach Boulevard to the site. The proposed business will be a cafe that primarily sell fresh, rich brewed coffee, tea, and cold beverages. The cafe will be in a 3,789 square free, square feet freestanding drive-through building. Proposed hours of operation are Monday through Sunday, 4:00 a.m. to midnight. On occasions, the cafe may operate its drive-through lane on a 24-hour basis. No alcohol will be served at this location and there will be, there will be four to six employees on site at any given time. The floor plan shows a 1,200-square-feet seating area and two unisex restaurants, also a 400-square-feet customer area, order station, and pickup counter. The floor plan also shows the back bar, workroom, employee area, and management office. No outdoor seating area is proposed at this location. Staff support this project as it does meet the city's land use requirements. Compliance with development standards for a new cafe was evaluated and approved under a zoning clearance review by the Community Development Director back in July 2024. The cafe as proposed complies with all other provisions of the Westminster Municipal Code, including the city's off-street parking standards, landscaping, and signs. According to Westminster Municipal Code, the late-night hours of operation is conditionally permitted in the C2 zone. The proposed business is consistent with the general plan policies such as land use goal four, that seeks compatible commercial development that is sensitively integrated with existing development and minimizes impact on surrounding land uses. General Plan Policy 2.6 encourages the city to seek input from adjacent property owners and surrounding stakeholders. The CUP process allows for public comments and notification to neighbors, ensuring consistency to the general plan policies. The business is compatible with surrounding land uses. There are already existing food establishments across Beach Boulevard in city of Huntington Beach that have late-night hours of operation. The project was also reviewed by DRT, the Development Review Team, including the Westminster Police Department. DRT is supportive of the proposed use and does not express any concerns with the proposed hours of operation. Their comments are included in conditions of the approval. And here are some of the conditions of the approval. Outdoor seating is not permitted at this premises. The indoor customer area with the cafe shall remain closed between midnight and 4:00 a.m. During these hours, business operations shall be restricted to drive-through customers only. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve case number 2024-0024, subject to recommended conditions of approval in the draft resolution. This is the conclusion of my presentation and I can't answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if I'm not mistaken, this is your first time presenting to the commissioners, correct? Great job, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for city staff?
I have a question.
Why is it on occasion for the 24 hours? Wouldn't it typically be that they would set their business hours and then it would just be open seven days a week, 24 hours?
I think at first it's gonna be based on the demand. If they feel that the demand is for like 24 hours, they're gonna go for the 24 hours, so.
So are we approving 24 hours any day, or are we approving on occasion 24 hours as part of this conditional use permit?
I think we are approving for 24 hours, but then the business owner gonna make that decision if they wanna go for the 24 hours or not, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I do have one other question.
Sure.
As my family and I regularly patronized Lazy Dog when Lazy Dog was there, so we regularly got to see the circus that was the Chick-fil-A drive-through. And I just wanna know if the city, I'm sure you guys, I've been watching the Marie Callender's transformation into Chick-fil-A, just like everybody else driving down Beach Boulevard. Has that been addressed, or are we gonna have fighting drive-throughs?
Could you please repeat your question?
So the Chick-fil-A is moving right next door to the old Marie Callender's building, and now it's gonna be a larger Chick-fil-A. I'm imagining that they're still going to have a drive-through at that location as well. When they were in the proposed future Starbucks location, I don't know if you ever had an opportunity to see, but they would have this long, winding, continue-to-drive through that would happen well out into the parking lot and sort of take over the entire parking lot for that whole section, about halfway into the parking area that like the Lazy Dog and the other businesses would utilize. And so I'm just wondering, was that addressed, or are you gonna have a fighting drive-through situation? Because I don't think that Starbucks is going to have nearly the amount of cars as Chick-fil-A does, and so Chick-fil-A might kind of take over.
Yes, thank you for asking that question. I can answer it. We've been working with, this move has actually been very well coordinated between the two properties going back to before COVID. And I can tell you that both of these projects, although independent projects, they have not been assessed in a bubble. They have been assessed as a comprehensive site plan. We also went back and made sure that any modifications to the site didn't disturb any previous approvals to the overall parking of the location. So all of that has been taken into account. Like you said, the Starbucks, and if we look at the one here across the street here on Westminster Beach, definitely doesn't compare to the queuing on Chick-fil-A. And then the new Chick-fil-A is going to be one of a kind in that I think it's up to four drive-throughs that are coming in. So that's, and the footprint of the building is relatively close to what it is today. So really, they're changing location, they're growing a little bit, but the drive-through layout is going to prevent what you were describing. That's the goal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Would like to know if this facility need a grease interceptor? Because according here, I didn't see any location for a grease interceptor in the design.
Sorry. I think because they don't have a full kitchen, it's not required to have it.
Yeah, and if I may add, so if, these tenant improvements are subject to building permits, and at that time during building plan check review, it would be evaluated for compliance with health and safety standards. And so if it is determined that it would trigger a grease interceptor, that would be addressed through the building plan check process.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for city staff? All right, do we have any public hearing?
I do not have any speaker cards.
I think, do we have the applicant here, Starbucks here, or anybody from the city? Do they wanna speak?
They are.
We would absolutely love the applicant to afford them time to speak on behalf of the project.
I'm here on behalf of Starbucks. I'm the architect. Hi, my name is Iceland Delgado. I work with Hesey Atelier, that's my company. I work with Starbucks. We are representing them as an Architect of Record.
Never mind that.
This is Maggie, my project manager for the project. We are really excited about this one, and we are growing Starbucks as we wanna have more of a community presence. We have a cafe now, which we're relocating to the drive-through to give the community a better experience with cafe and with drive-through. To answer a question, we are planning to do, what is it called, the delineators that will help, if it gets too crowded, we have that, as well as we have a new program for Starbucks that makes your coffees even faster. It's a quicker seconds. It takes off second, so hopefully that will speed the process as well. And I think that's probably, oh, another thing, the 24-hour, we are trying, we are putting 360 cameras at the, so that the partners have visibility and will be secured. So we're trying to hit all those things. And we also wanted to revamp and debrand to get more Starbucks, but keeping the, it's a beautiful building, Chick-fil-A kept it in great condition. It's one of the better ones. We do a lot of remodels for Starbucks, and it was in good condition, so we wanted to just debrand it with color. So we're keeping the integrity of the building. It's in good condition, and it will look nice with the community. Any other questions for me?
Any questions for the applicant? Go ahead.
I do have a question. It's not, it's totally unrelated to the planning aspect, but it's the building aspect. And I saw that when I was in the center the other day, I noticed they're installing two large tanks underground. Do you know what those are for? Behind the, behind?
No, we haven't started construction, so it wouldn't be for our project.
Okay.
Yeah. But to answer your question about the grease interceptor, there is an existing grease interceptor there that is utilized by Chick-fil-A, so we plan on utilizing that, saving the environment, just using what is there, it's in good condition, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? I'm ready.
Can I ask another question? I'm wondering, why are we not allowing them to have outdoor seating? I mean, one of the nice things about getting a coffee at a Starbucks is being able to sit on the patio with a friend. So I'm just curious, why was that included?
Actually, it was proposed at beginning, but police department suggested to remove the outdoor dining, since it's gonna operate 24 hours, so.
But couldn't they bring the tables and chairs in when they're outside of normal business hours, because the 24 hour is just for the drive-through?
If I can just add to that, the reason Starbucks was also not really keen on having that little, it's a little patio in the back, and it's white, it's right by the drive-through, so you hear the cars. It's very noisy. There's no guardrails. So it wasn't really an ideal place. And I believe Chick-fil-A doesn't have one now there currently either. So it's just not the ideal location for a patio. It's just, it's right there by the drive-through, and you hear the speakers and the car fumes.
Okay.
It wasn't the best experience. But we have a large, new cafe with different types of seating, so hopefully that'll make up for it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
No.
All right, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
If we have no further speakers, I'd like to go ahead and close the public hearing on item 8.2. Any comments from Commissioners?
Well, I think this is a great center in the city of Westminster, and it's nice to see that there's interest in maintaining the center. And when one applicant decides to move to another location, it's immediately, relatively soon, being filled. So I'm glad to see the reuse of the Marie Callender. Chick-fil-A is expanding, Starbucks is coming in, and then there's a major project going on in the former Pavilion Market. Glad to see the center is alive and well. Welcome to Starbucks, and thanks Chick-fil-A for sticking around.
Any comments or motions?
I made a motion for approval.
Okay, I second it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hamadi and a second by Commissioner Bowie to approve case number 2024-0024, the conditional use permit for Starbucks.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Hamadi, seconded by Commissioner Bowie to adopt a resolution entitled "A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Westminster, California Approving Case Number 2024-0024, A Conditional Use Permit to Operate Late Night Hours for a New Drive-Thru Coffee House (Starbucks) Within the C-2 Zoning District Located at 16388 Beach Boulevard, APN 107-220-75." Commissioner Bowie?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Rose?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Chair Wolpert?
Yes.
Motion carried, five zero.
Excellent, thank you.
The commission's action on this item shall become effective 15 days after the decision date identified in the notice of decision. The applicant and/or any other interested party may file an appeal of the commission's action to the city council. The appeal must be in writing and filed with the city clerk within the previously mentioned 15-day period.
All right, we will move on to item number 8.3, case number 2024-0210. I will go ahead and turn it over to city staff.
Good evening, Chair Wolpert, and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Stephanie Tomayeno, Contract Planner for the City of Westminster. The Community Development Department worked in collaboration with the City Manager's Office on this item. So presenting this item with me is Ryan Salz, Senior Management Analyst in the City Manager's Office. So I'll go ahead and turn over the floor to him.
Thank you, Stephanie. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. The city council provided direction to staff in 2022 to pursue the implementation of digital billboards along the 22 and 405 freeways. As staff began the process of exploring opportunities for the development of new freeway-oriented billboards, it was quickly identified that we don't have a clear inventory of the billboards that are currently active in Westminster. Once this was recognized, staff performed a manual count by driving the city's streets and freeway corridors. After that, the Planning Division conducted extensive research to gather entitlement and permit documentation available for each location. A total of 28 billboards were counted within the city's boundaries. However, only 10 billboards were confirmed to have conditional use permits, or CUPs for short. All the billboards with discovered CUPs are close to the freeway. Based on a limited amount of records found, many of the billboards along city streets only have building permit records, if any. Some of the building permits date back to the 1960s. We also realize many of these billboards along city streets are located in mixed-use zoning districts and in areas that would generally not be considered as viable for billboard development today. The billboard amortization ordinance seeks to accomplish a few key objectives. First, it would eliminate billboards that do not have an adequate entitlement issued by the city. Second, it would establish a clear process for removal and amortization of non-conforming billboards. The amortization period would provide the billboard operators and property owners with the sufficient amount of time to generate just compensation and advance the removal date. And third, the removal of the old static billboards along city streets would promote visual appeal, reduce blight, and improve public safety along Westminster's busiest corridors. Ordinance number 2456 was adopted in 2010 and was intended to address all non-conforming signs in Westminster, including but not limited to billboards. That ordinance required removal of non-conforming signs following a maximum period of seven years from the date of its adoption. However, the city did not enforce compliance with the ordinance 2456, and the billboards remained in place and with no timeline for removal. The billboard amortization ordinance being presented tonight reinforces the intent of the past ordinance and proposes a cumulative amortization period of 20 years, ending on July 15, 2030. An amortization period is necessary to remain compliant with state law. Section 5412 of the Business and Professions Code of the State of California requires payment of just compensation for the compelled removal of billboards. The amortization period effectively satisfies the requirement of just compensation. And next here are a few examples of the billboards that would be affected by the amortization ordinance. As you can see, many are located in or around parking lots and can be viewed from streets such as Westminster Boulevard and Golden West Street. Most of the advertisements are promoting businesses that are not affiliated with Westminster. As you can see on this last slide, there can be issues with graffiti and tattered or ripped displays. In some cases, this can become a public safety issue in addition to just general blight. As you already know, the city is also considering an update to existing billboard regulations. There will be further explanation during the next item on the agenda, but it is important to note that the billboard amortization ordinance would result in a net reduction of billboards throughout the city, regardless of new billboard development allowed along the freeways. A total of 18 billboards are expected to be removed at the end of the amortization period. And the main distinction between the potential new billboards and the billboards along city streets is that the potential billboards would be along the freeway. They would be digital, and they would provide substantial benefits to the city. This table shows a breakdown of the total number of active billboards in the city and how many are expected to be removed if the ordinance is adopted. There were 28 billboards identified in the city's boundaries during the inventory conducted by staff. Of the 28, 10 CUPs were found. Of the 10 CUPs, four of those billboards were part of the past redevelopment agency billboard program. 18 billboards were identified that do not have CUPs, and these are the billboards that would be slated for removal at the end of the amortization period in 2030. And I will pass the presentation back to Stephanie to discuss the ordinance's consistency with city policies.
Thank you, Ryan. In accordance with the Westminster Municipal Code, the proposed zoning text amendments were evaluated for consistency with overarching policies and goals established in the city's documents, including the general plan. Overall, the proposed billboard amortization ordinance is consistent, was found to be consistent with several different goals and policies, including CD-2, design quality, CD-1.5, property maintenance. And overall, staff found that the proposed amendments support the city's objectives to preserve and enhance visual quality, promote community identity, and supports property maintenance. I'll turn it back over to Ryan.
Thanks, Stephanie. To briefly summarize the ordinance being considered tonight, it would mandate removal of billboards without a CUP at the end of the amortization period. The removal of these billboards would result in a net decrease in billboards in the city. This would remain true regardless of whether billboard development was maximized along freeways in the city. The removal of the billboards along city streets would promote more active streetscapes, which would positively affect both residents and visitors of Westminster. And last, it's worth noting that the ordinance is exempt from CEQA due to a common sense exemption. Based on all the information presented tonight and available in your staff report, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopts a resolution entitled "A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Westminster, California Recommending that the City Council Approve the Billboard Amortization Ordinance, Including Zoning Text Amendment, Case Number 2024-0210, Specifically Addressing Existing Non-Conforming Billboards on City Streets." Thank you for your time. Staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, staff. Commissioners, do we have questions for staff?
Yes, I have one. Could we go back to the chart where you had it broken down, the various status of all the billboards?
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you. So we have billboards without CUPs, and they're on the hit list. They're gonna be going. That's the plan. And then what about the remaining? Is there some, at some point, is there a long-range plan to also address those and remove those?
So billboards with CUPs would be a different process if we did wanna look at potentially removing them. I think there's a different set of standards or just a different process that we would need to go through to explore that. Maybe we'll call on planning or the city attorney to expand on that a little bit further.
As with any CUP, in order to terminate it, or you would have to do a revocation hearing, which would allow due process, so everybody could be heard, usually it's because you're violating the condition of approval or some other, you know, legal requirements that you're not complying with in order for the revocation to occur. So since they have a CUP, they run with the land, and they keep going on forever unless there's a revocation or an abandonment, and they terminate it, and they will fully turn it over.
Okay. Well, it might be possible, just as a suggestion here, that staff might check in with other cities to see what they've done in situations like this, to see if there's a possibility of conducting a revocation for reasons that may not be apparent at the moment. Thank you.
And I'll throw in one other thing. I think with the RDA, there's statutory language timeline frames where they may actually have to go away on their own because of the, they got amortized in, under state law for RDA dissolution, and then it went away, and so it's got extended. But I think it's gonna be termed out where they will have to cease to exist on their own.
Yes, and to expand on that a little bit further, that, based on state law, as the city attorney shared, on January 1, 2020- city attorney shared, on January 1, 2026, is when that's currently set to expire. The law has changed a few times over the last decade or so, since the redevelopment agencies have been dissolved. Originally, it's, after the dissolution of those, they continued the Redevelopment Agency billboard program until January 1, 2023, was when they were originally set to expire. And I believe just before that, before or after that date, there was a bill that was passed that extended that deadline to January 1, 2026. And that's where it stands now. If it remains there, then that will be the date that they could potentially be removed.
Any other questions for City Staff? Well, we have to first close the public hearing before we can make any motions. If there's no other questions for staff, do we have any speakers on this public hearing item?
No, we don't.
Okay, didn't think so. Just wanted to check. So at that time, I'd like to go ahead and close the public hearing on item 8.3. Commissioners, any comments, discussions, motions? Go right ahead.
Just a comment. Thank you to staff and our City Council for going down this path. These billboards have been here for many years, and as shown in some of the pictures that we saw, they're, some are in poor condition. They really don't add anything, any value to the city. And based on the staff report and in talking with staff, this has been a long and arduous journey to track down all these billboards. So as a resident and commissioner, thank you all for what you've done to improve our community.
Yeah, I'll agree with everything that Vice Chair Anderson just said, because I think that anything that we can do to get rid of blight in the city will make it a better place for residents and commissioners and staff and everyone alike. So, I agree.
Taking down these ugly signs is going to make a lot of difference.
I thought you liked rust. You don't like rust?
I hate rust.
No.
I like clean and neat. I made the motion to approve it.
I'll second. So on item number 8.3, go ahead.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hamad, seconded by Chair Wolbert, to adopt a resolution entitled "A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Westminster, California, recommending that the City Council approve the Billboard Amortization Ordinance, including Zoning Text Amendment, Case Number 2024-0210, specifically addressing existing non-conforming billboards on city streets. Commissioner Bowie?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamad?
Yes.
Commissioner Rose?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Chair Wolbert?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0.
The Commission's recommendation will be forwarded to the City Council for a decision.
All right, and with that, we will move on to our final public hearing, item 8.4, case number 2024-0188. I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to Planning Staff.
Thank you, Commissioner. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, Commissioners, Staff. My name's Adolph Joseda, the Assistant City Manager for the City of Westminster. It's my pleasure to be here tonight. Welcome to Commissioner Rose on our first meeting. And I wanted to thank the rest of you for serving as Planning Commissioners and providing good service to the community. It's never, it's always appreciated by staff.
Thank you.
Tonight's item, case number 2024-0188, a zoning text amendment. The subject matter is city-initiated billboard ordinance. I'm going to provide a little bit of background before I turn it over to Stephanie here. This is an ongoing initiative with the city to beautify the city. We just finished an item where we're addressing blight in the city. This is a way of standardizing and creating rules for digital billboards. A little bit more background, the City Council did provide direction and agreed that this was a creative revenue source for the city and asked us to pursue bringing digital billboards to the City of Westminster. Again, this creates rules for this type of development in the City of Westminster. Full disclosure, we have currently three pending applications for freeway-oriented billboards, digital billboards. This is not a discussion on those projects, but at full disclosure, there are three applications. Tonight, we're looking at establishing rules for, the rules of engagement for these types of efforts. A little bit of background, as you know, Planning Commission is an advisory to the City Council on these particular matters, so your recommendation will be presented to the City Council for approval if there is a motion made tonight. We did present this to you August of 21 of 2024. We were not really able to have an engaged discussion on this, so at courtesy of the Commission, we've put a lot more work into the presentation, to the report. We did have some one-on-ones with the Commissioners, and we hope that we can continue to have that discussion tonight in our second public hearing. There was a public notification was completed in accordance with the Westminster Municipal Code. And again, I can't, I'll say it one more time, one more time. This is not a discussion on any particular billboard project in the city. It really establishes a set of rules, which we believe are consistent with other agencies in Southern California. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Stephanie Tomayeno. She's our Contract Principal Planner, does really good work for the city. Turn it over to her.
Thank you, Adolfo. So as the Commission knows, this project is a city-initiated zoning text amendment that would amend Chapter 17.330 of the Westminster Municipal Code, regulating signs. The project is referred to as the Billboard Ordinance, and it encompasses a variety of changes to the city's existing billboard regulations. Billboards are a permitted sign type currently in the city, and the proposed ordinance would update and expand upon the existing regulations based on lessons learned over the years. Very importantly, the expanded billboard regulations would allow the city to address digital and electronic signs and to create standards to prevent impacts related to lighting and traffic safety. In addition, the ordinance would formally establish the public benefits component of future billboards. Generally, these agreements may include provisions for annual mitigation fees paid to the city, public use of the billboards to advertise community messages, and discounts for Westminster businesses. The primary objectives of the ordinance are summarized here. If adopted by the City Council, we can anticipate a reduction in the total number of billboards throughout the city. Billboards would generally be consolidated in locations near the freeways, thereby reducing billboard proliferation throughout the city. We can also anticipate, if approved, that future billboard locations would operate more efficiently by utilizing modern technology and allowing each location to advertise multiple Now, we understand a number of comments were raised by the Planning Commission when the billboard ordinance was first considered on August 21. The minutes from that meeting are provided in Attachment 3, and in general, those comments generally covered 11 different topic areas. And staff has provided a response and further clarification on each item, which is detailed in your staff report. The next few slides will go into detail over specific pieces of the proposed billboard ordinance, which is provided as Exhibit 1 to Attachment 1. The ordinance that is in your packet today is substantially similar to what the Planning Commission considered at the last meeting, with the exception of what's on this slide right here. The Commission was concerned that billboards could be built all along the freeways, which, you know, with no regard to the maximum number. So in response, staff recommends adding this standard to the ordinance, placing a limitation on the maximum number of billboard citywide. This is the only change proposed by staff from the prior version of the billboard ordinance. In identifying an appropriate number for a billboard cap, staff looked at all qualifying properties that would be eligible to request a billboard under the proposed ordinance. Specifically, staff looked at properties adjacent to the freeways that are zoned commercial or industrial and are located at least 200 feet away from residential. We also made sure that these locations were spaced at least 1,000 feet apart per Caltrans requirements. What resulted are these 15 potential locations. A little bit hard to see, but it's the green dots. Based on staff's analysis, we determined that under the new ordinance, up to 15 billboards could be proposed in the city. Therefore, we are recommending setting the cap at 10 billboards total. Under the proposed ordinance, staff recommends increasing the maximum height of a billboard to 90 feet. However, it's also important to note that this additional clause, which is highlighted in yellow, which is highlighted in yellow. So while this would be a maximum height, we want to clarify that not all properties would qualify for a 90-foot-tall billboard. The standard was specifically designed to give staff and the Planning Commission the ability to review billboards on a case-by-case basis, depending on the unique circumstances of the property. So the next few slides are from the visual height analysis that was provided to the Planning Commission as Attachment 4. So when identifying an appropriate number for the billboard height, staff looked at existing freeway-oriented structures. This sign is currently located off the 405 freeway, and it includes a digital sign advertising the Westminster auto dealers, excuse me. The city approved the structure at a height of 80 feet. And here is a hypothetical billboard, so not actually proposed in the city. But this mock-up is meant to generally represent what a 90-foot-tall structure would look like near the 405 freeway. So as you can see from this vantage point, there is a bridge that goes over the freeway that obstructs a portion of this hypothetical billboard. The bridge is 35 feet tall, and the hypothetical billboard is shown at the maximum height allowed, 90 feet. So as part of the CUP process, staff would require the applicant to provide multiple renderings showing the billboard at different heights to justify the proposed height, and then all of that would be considered as part of the CUP, and again, subject to Planning Commission approval. And this slide depicts an existing billboard located in the city of Garden Grove, along the 22 freeway, so outside of city boundaries. This portion of the freeway is very different from the prior slide because there are no surrounding structures that could obstruct the visibility of the billboard. So along a location such as this, it would be difficult for an applicant to justify the 90-foot height. So this slide details the proposed billboard standard establishing a minimum setback from residential units. It's important to note that the current billboard regulations do not have a residential setback. So there are existing billboards in the city right now that are located closer to residential. Staff recommends prohibiting future billboards from being located within 200 feet of residential uses. And because each property is different, there is a provision in the standard to allow staff as well as the Planning Commission to consider exceptions. Specifically, an applicant may request a reduced setback by providing an engineering light study, but ultimately, any such exception request would need to be approved by the Planning Commission.
Stephanie, can you go back to the slide of the auto dealers? Just as an example, this sign that exists there today at 80 feet, it's 75 feet away from a residential property. So I just wanted to put that in relative terms. This has been installed many years ago, 75 feet away from a home. The current proposal, you'd have to justify the height, and you would need to stay within 200 feet. So we're creating that buffer. Again, quality of life is what we're focusing on.
Okay, so moving on, the next, this slide represents a very small portion of the operational and design standards, specifically regulating digital technologies. So for example, the proposed ordinance would require billboards to be installed with an ambient light sensor to automatically adjust the brightness level. The proposed ordinance also establishes specific brightness levels and provides guidance on how to measure the lighting. On the reverse side, the current billboard regulations do not include any standards addressing modern technologies. So it requires staff to review proposals on a subjective basis, which, you know, could be prone to inconsistent interpretations. These standards are designed to remove the subjectivity and overall help streamline the review process. This table provides a brief summary comparing the existing billboard regulations to the proposed ordinance. So first, no changes are proposed to the approval process. Just to reiterate, billboards currently require a conditional use permit and are subject to Planning Commission approval before a notice public hearing, meaning that mailers would be sent out to all property owners and occupants within 500 feet of that specific billboard location. And if the ordinance is adopted, that process remains the same. All billboards will continue to require Planning Commission approval. Second, the proposed ordinance places more restrictions on where billboards could be located. Only freeway-adjacent properties would be eligible, and this is different from the current code, which allows billboards to be requested along city streets. Third, the proposed ordinance increases the maximum billboard height. However, it's important to clarify that this is not a by right approval. Applicants must still demonstrate that their height is justified. The height analysis will be evaluated by both staff and the Planning Commission. And last, the proposed ordinance includes a residential setback requiring billboards to be located at least 200 feet away from residential uses, whereas the existing code lacks any such setback. For any zoning amendments, the Westminster Municipal Code requires findings of consistency. The proposed billboard ordinance is consistent with the city's overarching goals. For example, the ordinance aligns with several general plan policies related to economic development and fiscal vitality. It also supports the city's first strategic plan goal, achieving financial stability. Overall, the proposed ordinance is consistent with the city's policies as it encourages future economic development by diversifying the city's revenue. In summary, the proposed billboard ordinance establishes uniform development and design standards that are consistent with current market conditions. It protects the public interest by regulating potential impacts such as lighting and vehicle safety, and it requires community benefits. Additionally, this ordinance is exempt from CEQA because it is an administrative activity and not considered a project under CEQA. As a reminder, the Planning Commission is an advisory body to the City Council. The Commission makes recommendations on matters related to Title 17 land use within the municipal code, and those recommendations are forwarded to the City Council for consideration. In accordance with the Westminster Municipal Code, the Planning Commission may take one of the following actions. Either one, recommend the City Council approve the billboard ordinance as recommended by staff. Option two, recommend the City Council approve the proposed billboard ordinance with specific modifications. Or three, recommend the City Council disapprove the proposed billboard ordinance. Staff recommends, or staff's recommendation, which was provided as Option 1 in the prior slide, is to adopt Resolution Number 24-008, recommending approval of the draft City Council ordinance as provided in Exhibit 1 to Attachment 1. This concludes staff's presentation. Happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
On the 90-feet sign that you showed, you also stated you could also extend it by another 6 feet if you have to? Or I misunderstood what you said?
Yeah, there's a general provision in there that refers to architectural enhancements. So rather than it being the sign face itself, if, say, down the line, you know, you have a billboard developer that is very creative, and maybe they have some kind of design or architectural embellishment that goes along the structure to cover it up, so it's more than just simply a sign face, that provision is intended to allow for creativity and innovation in the design itself. So that's what that is intended to be. It's not intended to allow the sign face itself to exceed the 90 feet. It would be if there was, say, some kind of cap or some kind of, again, architectural design embellishment. And we would, again, be reviewing it through a discretionary review process to ensure that it meets really the intent of that standard.
Any other questions for staff?
The question about this power for those billboard, will be regular special solar cell for those things in the daylight time, they can accumulate power.
So we've worked with the billboard operators to understand the way that they function from a power and lighting perspective. During the daytime, they have automatic, the technology has an automatic enhancer so that it can be visually observed. In the evenings, it has a dimmer, right? And then there is a technology so that it's not as visible from every angle, as far as the visibility is concerned. Going on to the way that it's powered, one of our first questions when we started meeting with them is, can you do this with solar? The technology is not there for solar, so they do need a Southern California Edison power drop. But the, yeah, so that should, I think that answers your question on power.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. The 200-foot residential setback, there's a reference, it says the standard was determined after a thorough review of billboard regulations in other cities. Which other cities? Any that stand out?
We looked at a lot.
Ryan, would you like to? Ryan's been working on this for quite some time.
Yes, so we worked with the Planning Division and the City Attorney's Office to do some research, just to name a few. Fullerton, Anaheim, Riverside, Corona, Placentia.
They all follow the 200 feet? Or is it more?
They were different, kind of across the board. We just kind of looked at all of them, and, you know, we didn't meet a specific standard. I can't speak to, I guess, a specific standard on all of them on residential specifically. We could come back with that exact information. But we looked at a bunch of different cities to make sure that generally, we were going to be aligned with what their standards were.
Thank you.
Do we have any math or calculations on that .3 cantlefoot output above ambient light? How far that light will travel visibly?
Yes, I believe that it's to be measured from 250 feet for a 14-by-48-foot display length and width. And a 20-by-60 would be a little bit farther away. I believe it's 350 feet. I need to check that, but I believe I'm right on it.
And we would also require that the analysis be conducted by a state-licensed electrical engineer and not by the business, not provide documentation or specs by the proposed proprietor or technology manufacturer.
So hypothetically, we set a 250-foot limit from any residential property. The billboard is a larger billboard, and that would get approved at 20-by-60, it could extend potentially 100 feet of visible light into that neighborhood. Is that correct?
Chair Wilbert, for one thing, I do want to clarify that it's not 250 feet currently proposed within the ordinance. We are recommending a 200-foot residential setback requirement. And I missed your question there.
Okay, so if ambient light is measured at 250 feet, .3 cantlefoot above ambient light, and it's expected to be visible at 250 feet, but we're only requiring a 200-foot setback from residential, I have 50 feet going into residential property potentially. Now, it might be 90 feet in the air, but it's going to be visible. So kind of what we're, what I'm looking at is, have we done the math calculations on what's actually going to be impacting into the residents? Now, I know there's angle of light reflection.
That's, yeah.
Yeah, and they may be 90 feet below or 70 feet below. They may be going right over their heads and they're never going to see these things glowing at night. I think for peace of mind for residents, they kind of would want to understand how these technologies operate so they could say, you know what? I get it. It's 500 feet from my house, but I don't see it. It's a thing that's advertising specifically to traffic at certain heights where that light is not coming down into their property like a terrible Vegas hotel.
Right.
Right? That's what we're trying to avoid because it's not, it may be revenue for the city, but it's not beautifying the city. So I just want to make sure that they understand the calculations and how cantlefeet work and how far that light's going to go out.
Absolutely. In addition to the specs and the math that you just described, which is very accurate, the key, I think, is freeway-oriented. And the technology is such, and Ryan and I have both gone out at night in other cities and looked at these billboards, is they're oriented towards the freeway and the technology is such that if you're underneath it within that 200 feet, you are looking up and you really can't see anything. You see a shaded opaque darkness. It's when you're in the direct line and there, the technology is such that it aims it directly at the spectator, which is essentially the freeway driver. And obviously, those folks will see it. The purpose is for them to see it, and they will be further than the 200 feet.
Excellent. Any other questions for staff?
Yes. Stephanie, on the photo you showed, or the diagram showing the green dots and the potential billboards, some were, it looks like on either side of the freeway. Is that 1,000 feet apart?
Yeah, I'll turn over the question to Ryan, who prepared that graphic.
Okay, thank you.
Can we illustrate the figure?
Sure. And if our IT team can have the PowerPoint presentation up on the screen again, thank you. Go back to the map, so just keep going back.
Are they on both sides of the freeway main line?
Yeah, there you go.
There it is, yes, thank you. Okay. So there's a couple there, there along the San Diego freeway, there are two of them. It looks like they're on either side of the freeway. So are they 1,000 feet apart? No, I don't think so.
No, they may not be. I don't know the exact distance, but state law does not dictate if they are across from each other on a freeway, the 1,000-foot limit does not apply. It's only on the adjacent, you know, north or south side, it needs to be 1,000 feet. But technically, there could be two billboards right across from each other if they are on the north and south side.
Okay, but can the city then, does the proposed ordinance address that issue to avoid billboards across from one another?
Can we defer to the state on that?
Yeah, we defer to the state on that. It does not directly address that in its current form, no.
Okay, could it?
Staff is recommending the current form of the ordinance as it is right now, but I believe that the Planning Commission is able to make suggestions if they see fit to the current ordinance.
Okay, and then the second question, showing the various photos you showed of billboards from the freeway, or signs from the freeway signs, billboards, did you, are there any pictures showing the impact on, in residential areas? What do the residents see from a neighborhood? You're showing what people see on the freeway, but people also see this from residential?
Yeah. If I may jump in, that's a great question. Thank you for that question, Vice Chair. That is certainly a vantage point that we do request as part of the conditional use permit process. So there are a lot of different renderings that are prepared with billboard applications once there is a specific location and dimensions and a structure in plan. And typically, what happens is that the applicant will do a field site visit in conjunction with city staff, where we will go visit kind of the surrounding areas, we look at it from the freeway, we look at it from surrounding properties, including residential, and we identify the key vantage points where we would want renderings to be prepared. So if that is something that, you know, Planning Commission wants to expand upon, you can certainly provide that direction to staff to make sure that those types of exhibits and visuals are included as part of the CUP application so that we can consider that in, you know, making decisions on future billboard proposals.
Okay.
And along with that, when we issue notices for project-specific discussions, we also take, we're very sensitive to be able to logically notice it in such a way that it not only meets the requirement, but it exceeds the requirement if a particular vantage point is more impactful to a community. We will go beyond the required radius to make sure that those people are brought into the conversation.
Hey, question. Regarding the insurance for those billboard, can you tell us a little bit about the insurance to make sure that it will not bring harmful to residents around it?
Yes, that is something that the insurance would need to be obtained by the billboard operator or property owner on the site. And that would be something that would be ingrained in the development agreement or operating agreement that is agreed upon between the city and the property owner or operator. So the exact limits or amounts of those insurance, I guess, premiums need to be aligned with what the risk manager, which would be the HR director for the city, would be to suffice. So those would be considered, I guess, on a case-by-case basis, but that has been considered in the past with the operating agreement that has been approved with the city, and it will be in the future.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. I have a few questions, since it's my first. Should I just ask you all of them or one at a time?
Do one at a time.
Okay. So one at a time. Going back to the map that had all of the dots on it, I don't know if we can bring that up? Because that was one of my questions, which was how many?
IT, could we get the map back up, please?
That was a great graphic, by the way. I'm glad you guys brought that. It looks like majority of these potential sites are along the 405. Along the 405 is also the most likely areas for development where we're going to have onsite advertising in the form of large digital signs. We already have a couple. You know, there's the old RV dealership that is no longer there at the corner where the 405 and 22 meet. And then we've got the large Westminster Mall area that is hopefully going to be redeveloped sometime in the future. So there's potentially a lot of sites along the 405 that will have these large digital signs. And I know that this zoning is just for the off-site advertising, which would be a billboard, but I'm just wondering if some of these regulations are going to be reflected in onsite advertising zoning? Because I know that that was something that I had asked the city staff during my briefing. So that's one of my questions, because it seems like we're addressing things like lighting and stuff like that. And so I'd like to see that addressed in onsite advertising as well. I'm wondering if we can put in some modifications. I agree with the sentiment, or at least the question that was, this looks like we could wind up with multiple sites where we have digital billboards right across the freeway from each other. I'm seeing three that look like they would be right across the freeway from each other, potentially, on the 405. So I think that that might be something, if we're allowed to address that as a city, I think we should. And then regarding the height of 90 feet, I had a note here for myself. Could we, right now, the way that it's written is it says, "A maximum height of an electronic billboard shall be 90 feet. However, applicants must demonstrate that the proposed height is necessary for the effect of visibility and communication. City reserves the right to require reduction in height if it is determined that the maximum height..." And I understand that we are not approving any particular billboard project. We're just talking about creating a framework for billboard projects to be brought to the city and that this will bring revenue into the city, and so obviously, we want to make this work. But it says that we reserve the right to require reduction in height. If it's determined that the maximum height is not justified based on the site's topography, that does seem a bit subjective. So couldn't we lower the height and require that they ask for a variance where we could increase the height as needed? So basically inverting, rather than saying, here, you can go up to 90 feet, but you have to tell us why you need to go to 90 feet? Couldn't we say, hey, you need to go to this? Because it looks like 75 and 80 feet are the tallest structures that we have along the 405 freeway based off of the photos that you provided, the Carvana, which is gigantic, and the car, the Westminster Auto Dealers, which is, and neither of those are offensive in any way, but they're just really big. So I can't imagine another 15 feet on top of Carvana. And so it seems to me that this should be put back on the applicant when they actually do put their application in to tell us why they need more height than that. And I would just like to see if we could adjust the wording some way so that we're kind of letting people know, like, hey, the goal is not to be at 90 feet. The goal is to be at, you know, where other people are. Is that possible? That's my question.
Sure. So it sounds like, Commissioner Rose, thank you for the comments. It sounds like you have two questions, correct? Two different questions, so we can tackle one question at a time.
There were three.
Three?
It was onsite advertising, like, is this going to be reflected in onsite advertising zoning, which would be sign ordinance? And then the second would be, can we make it so that they're not right across from each other? And then the third would be regarding the height and just how the verbiage is.
Okay, sure. So as far as question number one, the specific billboard ordinance does not address onsite signs. However, it's a section that's part of a much larger chapter regulating all signage. So in general, billboards are intended for advertising any types of messages or businesses that are typically not on the property itself. For any onsite advertising, that means if you are a property that is located up against the freeway, you can certainly request a sign facing the freeway to advertise your business. You know, I imagine that property owners pay a premium to purchase that kind of signage visibility or that kind of visibility from the freeway, and so they have an opportunity to advertise their own business. So for onsite advertising signs, that's actually regulated under a different section of the code, so within the signed chapter 17.330. But that would be considered either a monument sign or a pylon sign. Pylon signs have a maximum height of 25 feet. So they would have to comply with those specific standards. Generally, pylon signs per the code, not only are they limited to 25 feet in height, but there is a limitation on the maximum sign area as well, which is not as generous as billboard signs. So there are provisions for that. I would say that in general, one of the things that staff can definitely remember and take into consideration is that as future applications for billboards come in, we do, you know, even though it's not part of the ordinance, it's certainly something that we can evaluate as part of our assessment of height and looking at other surrounding structures. So similar to, as I mentioned before, that we typically take a look at surrounding uses and look at, you know, key vantage points and what that proposed billboard could look like from residential neighborhoods, we can certainly take that into consideration and make sure that we are looking at similar structures. And that wouldn't, there wouldn't be a different precedent for that, I would say, because it's very common that when we are reviewing an application for a billboard, we would want to see that segment of the freeway and what other billboards and other freeway-oriented structures would exist along that freeway stretch. So the short answer to your question number one is that the specific billboard ordinance does not take into consideration the onsite advertising, but certainly through the CUP process, since it is a discretionary review, those are things that staff can look at. That's something that Planning Commission has the ability to direct staff to request that kind of analysis to be done as part of the process before it gets presented to the Planning Commission. Is there anything, Ryan or Adolfo? Okay. With regard to question number two, if there was another onsite advertising sign right across the freeway that, you know, is less than 1,000 feet, again, that can be considered as part, as applications come in. I know it's a bit difficult right now because we're talking about hypotheticals. Yeah, yeah, and it's really difficult to kind of anticipate what the development patterns in the city would be 10, 20, 30 years down the line. But that's the reason why, you know, it's really important to retain the CUP process for billboards because it's discretionary. It allows for that level of subjectivity to be able to consider things on a case-by-case basis, to look at what surrounding structures and uses would be around, and to be able to kind of expand like that area so that we're not just looking at properties directly adjacent to the billboard, but we're also going to be looking at it from across the freeway. And we can, again, as part of that application process, staff can certainly ask for all of those different vantage points to really look at, like, you know, co-essively what that freeway corridor looks like on both sides of the freeway.
I love the map. I do love the map, and thank you, Commissioners, for bringing that up during our one-on-ones. But the map is a hypothetical of what can possibly go along the freeway main line just based on land use. It's not a market study whether that location is viable from an operating standpoint. So I would caution to introduce restrictions on something that's that hypothetical, and I think Stephanie just explained why. This would all come back on a case-by-case basis where we would be able to zoom out and take a look at really the site-specific areas and make a more informed decision at that time.
Yeah. And then to answer the third question about the maximum height and why it was drafted the way it is. So currently, you know, the existing regulations limit billboards to 35 feet in height. And as Adolfo mentioned, we have three pending applications that are all exceeding 35 feet in height. So those were submitted, the CUP application was submitted in conjunction with the variance application. And from a land use and zoning standpoint, variances are just tricky to be able to apply to these types of requests. So I actually have the variance findings right here, and this comes straight out of the Westminster Municipal Code. So in order to recommend approval of a variance, we would have to make the determination that there are special circumstances applicable to the property or to the intended use of the property so that the strict application of this title denies the property owner privileges enjoyed by other property owners in the vicinity and under identical zoning districts. Variance finding number two, the strict application of the applicable development standard creates an unnecessary involuntarily created hardship or unreasonable regulation that makes it obviously impractical to require compliance with the development standards. Variance finding number three, the variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of substantial property rights possessed by other property owners in the same vicinity and zoning district and denied to the property owner for which the variance is sought. Variance finding number four, the project is consistent with the general plan, which is pretty consistent with a lot of other entitlements. And then variance finding number five, approval of the variance would not be detrimental to the public health, interest, safety, or general welfare and would not be detrimental or injurious to property improvements in the vicinity. So it's really the first three variance findings that are challenging to make because it really talks about hardships, being deprived of special privileges that are enjoyed by other properties. It's not, you know, we can certainly, if that's the commission's consensus to go that route, that is certainly something that we can continue doing since that has been our practice in the past. But we would say that these findings are not well-suited towards billboard applications, and that's the reason why we try to craft this standard to allow for a certain degree of flexibility and, you know, interpretation to allow staff and the Planning Commission to look at all of these different considerations that are unique to billboards and that... to look at all of these different considerations that are unique to billboards, and that, you know, kind of achieve the effect of a variance, but without, you know, having to require applicants to apply for that variance, and requiring the Planning Commission, really, to make these very, very restrictive variance findings.
And before it gets to you, you can be certain that staff will hold any applicant's feet to the fire to make sure that they are presenting us with all the technical information to be able to justify any height that they're requesting.
Any other questions?
No. I was just going to clarify that my concern about the, it wasn't about onsite being across from a billboard. It was a billboard across from a billboard. And so, and my question about onsite was just, these are, could be potentially really good framework for billboards, and so would onsite digital signs have a similar good framework for, as they, as property owners that want to put up a digital sign for their own business? Do they have a framework like that, that they can follow?
And correct me if I'm wrong, too, not that I'm trying to jump in here for city staff, but if the property owner owns adjacent to the freeway, that could be one of those development sites for a billboard. They might choose to use the billboard ordinance to build for their advertising purposes for their site. That could be their onsite, correct? They don't need to have another marquee or another...
Yeah, that's correct. So it would be considered a electronic message board, which is intended for onsite advertising, which we still are requiring to obtain Planning Commission approval through a CUP.
Say that one more time. Onsite electronic message board.
Well, yeah, if I'm the property owner, and I'm going to build a hotel, I may not give the hotel the property, you know, the billboard ordinance. I may keep it for myself as the property owner. If I own the hotel, I might want to advertise the hotel that I own on my own property. So you may not have competing signs. It's kind of a hypothetical.
Yeah, and it really, my question wasn't about competing signs on the same property. It was more like, do people that are going to have electronic message boards are going to be held to the same standard that off-site digital billboards will be held to? That's like wanting to make sure that if we're holding off-site digital billboards to a certain standard, that we are holding onsite electronic message boards to the same standard.
Sure. So just to clarify, so for onsite electronic message boards, it's currently not, so we have limited regulations in that regard for our sign code. Our sign code is going to be updated down the line. It's part of a multi-phase process that the city and the Community Development Department is undertaking to comprehensively update the zoning code. And the sign code chapter is something that will be updated as part of that. So some of the cleanup items that we try to incorporate so that there wouldn't be inconsistencies between the billboard regulations versus the other existing signage regulations is for electronic message boards, which advertise onsite advertising, we added that to the ordinance just to clean it up, so that there's no inconsistencies, and it is requiring some sort of discretionary review. So if you were a hotel and you wanted to install a digital sign to advertise your hotel and the, you know, the services and the amenities that your hotel offers, that would be considered an electronic message board, and you would also need to apply for a conditional use permit, so either requiring Planning Commission approval or an administrative use permit, depending on where it's located. Currently, under the zoning code, we don't have specific standards that regulate the lighting in the same way as billboards, but as part of that discretionary review process, we can simply, as staff, we have the ability just to apply these same design standards in the meantime, you know, until such time when the sign code is comprehensively updated.
So it's an iterative process, and this is a big step in that right direction, and we will be visiting the signs that you're concerned with in the future.
I understand. Thank you.
I just have a procedural question at the moment. So we haven't opened the public hearing yet, correct?
Correct. We're still just asking questions.
Okay, so, but I'm thinking, I have a number of comments and questions, but I'm wondering if it might be appropriate to open the public hearing, and then that we might have some responses to what the people speak, if anybody does speak at this point.
Absolutely.
And then we can continue asking questions, just a thought.
I think so. Unless there's any other specific questions about the presentation, I think we're all in agreement here. Let's do that. Do we have any speaker request cards for item 8.4?
No, Chair.
Okay, and then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on item 8.4. Thank you very much.
Okay.
So Dawn, feel free to...
Okay, thank you, yeah.
Comments, questions?
Yeah, thank you. Okay. So I wanted to start off on page one of the staff report. It talks about introducing, that this would introduce precise standards. It's in the middle of the paragraph, first paragraph in our executive summary. Introduce precise standards for the location, development, and design of new electronic billboard freeway signs. So I think the two keywords there are precise standards. So then if you go to page four of the red line, of the red line ordinance, go to page four, paragraph H. So you've got precise standards, and then you go to paragraph H, and what's it say? Exceptions to standards. So right off the bat, we're starting with precise, and then we, oh, there's exceptions to the precision. So it says, "In general," it texts, "no electronic billboard should exceed the size, height, or setback limitations set forth. However," and then it goes on to say, "as rigid, numerical, or other design standards may preclude certain site-specific conditions or unique circumstances that might better achieve the purpose or objectives of this section." And I didn't see a good summary of the objectives of this, of the purpose and objectives of this section, but I get a general feeling. Exceptions to the stated numerical design standards could be, that would be height and size. Those would be numerical design standards. Height and size could fall in that category.
Size, height, or setback limitations. That's the way it's currently written.
Okay. Size, shape, height may be approved by the Planning Commission. So right now, so that's saying, if somebody came in and said, "I need a 110-foot tall billboard, and here's my justification," that's a possibility?
An applicant can request deviations based on what is written in the ordinance right now. So that's certainly something that they can request. It's a matter of how it's reviewed and whether or not that that is something that staff would be able to recommend approval of, and ultimately, whether or not Planning Commission would be able to support.
So we're really kind of back to the variance process at this point, which we have now. It's that we have the conditional use permit and variance are a combination to approve a billboard taller than 35 feet. And we have one on Fenwick that was approved under the variance and conditional use permits, or I don't know that we've really accomplished anything, except I think as Laura pointed out, we're starting at 90 feet instead of 35 feet. So I guess, as pointed out, and I think as indicated by staff in their presentation, the Planning Commission can go ahead and make changes to the proposed ordinance that's before us this evening. Now, whether or not the council accepts so, that's another story. That's their prerogative, and that's up to them. Okay, so anyway, I'm just, I saw just kind of a conflict of the statement. We have precise standards, then there's exceptions. Okay, so at the top of page four of the red line, on paragraph two, it talks about the cylindrical column support. And it says, "The architectural treatment should enhance the billboard's appearance." I guess it's the billboard structure, correct? It's the billboard support column that we're talking about. Why doesn't it say the architectural treatment must enhance? Is there a reason you chose, that the staff chose "should" rather than "must"?
There wasn't a specific, I'm sorry. I don't recall if there was specific discussion about the word "should" versus "shall." That is certainly something that the Commission could include as part of their motion.
Okay.
So from my days in attending depositions with attorneys, there's a "should, shall, may." Is that something you want to jump into?
It's the will of the Commission if they want to make it strict or allow a little bit more discretion of staff.
Okay. Okay, then moving on, and this question came up, and Stephanie, I think you've responded to it, but talks about each face of the sign shall be no larger than 20 feet by 60 feet in dimension plus framing. And then your comment was, well, this would give them an opportunity to provide architectural enhancements. So my question would be, why not shrink the size of the billboard, and then you're still within 20 by 60 feet? So that's a possibility, too, right? I mean, Planning Commission can make that recommendation to the council if that's the ultimate goal there, ultimate decision. Again, there's nothing magic about 20 by 60 billboard sizes.
That is certainly, again, a recommendation that you could include as part of your motion, if that is something that there is a Planning Commission consensus on.
Okay. Okay, and then on page six of the red line, at the top of the page number 11, it talks about, "No electronic billboard shall be maintained in the city unless the name of or person of the company owning or maintaining it and identifying, and the identifying number of the electronic billboard are plainly displayed." Okay, my thought there is, okay, let's add a phone number where people could contact. You got a name and a phone number? If you've got a problem with the billboard, it's malfunctioning, it's irritating you, it's displaying inappropriate material, put a phone number. Okay, then going to paragraph M on page six of the red line, says, "The city shall expedite any required approval for technology that is superior to, in energy efficiency over previous generation." So my question is, okay, so I think it's okay for the city to approve it, but why did we get "expedite"? And doesn't the city try to expedite all approvals when our customers come in? I don't see a reason for expedite, and that's... Okay.
Was that a question?
And then paragraph, I guess, N4 on page six, it talks about, "The overall size of the sign face shall not be increased by more than 5% over the originally approved sign." And that's if they put a new sign face up. So why is that allowed? Where did that come from?
Could you repeat which section you're referring to?
Yeah, we're on page six of the red line, and it's N, paragraph, and towards the bottom of the page, paragraph N, and it's number four of N.
Okay. And I'm sorry, what was the question?
Well, the question is, why is that there? Why are we allowing them to increase by 5%? Theoretically, they could change out the faces on a regular basis, and 5%, 5%, 5%. So where did that come from?
That specific verbiage was recommended by our city attorney, who has prepared billboard ordinances for a number of different cities and is a subject matter expert when it comes to billboard regulations. So that was something that was specifically recommended through the city attorney's office, but the Planning Commission can certainly strike that.
Okay. Okay. Okay, that, I think is, those are my, let's see here. Oh, yeah, another question, too. On page three of the staff report, it talks about, you were responding to one of the comments made at the previous Planning Commission meeting, and this is, it's on page three, and it's one, two, I guess, the third paragraph down, you talk about, "The city retains the discretion to expand the notification radius beyond 500 feet." So again, this is something the Planning Commission could go ahead and put in. In this, now we have a 200-foot separation. The Planning Commission go ahead and recommend a 500-foot separation between a billboard and residential? I mean, there's no reason that we can, right? Just like all the other, all the other items?
I think by doing that, you could potentially be limiting that, the map that we're all focused on. If you keep increasing the distance, then all those dots are essentially going to disappear along the 405 and the 22.
Well, not all of them, I don't think. Some may disappear, but I think we, I think what's been overlooked in this process, realizing the city council had their strategic planning session, and they're looking for ways to increase revenue, and that's terrific. I live in the city, and I'd like to see revenue increase. There's a lot of things that need to be improved, and hopefully, revenue could do that. But I don't want to do it at the expense of our residents, who have to live with giant billboards. And you had mentioned, Adolfo, that they may not be able to see the actual billboard, but the 90-foot-tall structure or 80-foot-tall structure, those are huge, and I would like to know, maybe you folks, somebody here in the audience, or you folks know, what is the size of the support column? You know, it looks, they appear to be square, so I'm thinking, are they 20 feet by 20 feet by 90 feet? Or what's the, anybody have any information on that? And maybe, there's two guys in the audience, maybe they might have a thought on that. I don't know. Maybe they're here for the billboards. Of course, we'd have to reopen the public hearing, so that would be up to the Commission. But that's a question I have. So we don't know, we don't know the size of the support columns?
It's not 20 feet, I guarantee you that.
Okay, but it's a substantial structure. It's there, it's visible, right?
That's my opinion.
Okay.
I think we should do more studying and then bring it back on this, because there's too many things back and forth.
What's that, Ellen? I'm sorry.
I'm thinking maybe we should bring this back. We shouldn't be voting on this tonight. There's too much, we're talking about too much here. We should study all of it, and then open the staff, and then bring it back, and then make a decision.
Well, the resolution before us is to approve recommendation or not approve recommendation to the city council.
If I may chime in, I think staff has thoroughly looked through this as to the regulations and what's good. And some of the technical stuff will end up being that technical, that when a specific billboard in a site is brought back to, all of that will be hashed out. Because, you know, hypothetically, right now, it's like, okay, where are all the billboards going? They don't have a specific site, and it will come back, and all those technical, and how big this is going to be, I think are, this is my opinion, more appropriate for when it's in front of you on a case-by-case basis. They're trying to establish standards across the board for applicants to come in, say, okay, I need to do this, I need to do that, oh, I can't do that height, okay, I have to do this, all right, now I have to be this size, okay, I have to make it this. So there's, and location-wise, so that they have something to work off of, based on the direction that council has given.
And to add to that point, thank you, city attorney. During our research, we did find that there are some billboards in some cities, that there's simply not a billboard ordinance or, you know, regulations like we're presenting that are, you know, very detailed compared to none at all. Sometimes they treat it as, you know, just a case-by-case basis, that they look at that project specifically and make those decisions just based on, you know, standards that aren't even directly associated with billboards in that city. So I think that the staff is trying to go above and beyond to look at all of the different things that could be considered. But like the city attorney said as well, there are certain technical pieces that would be looked at on a case-by-case basis as projects come back to the Planning Commission during the CUP process.
Yeah, well, I think, Ellen, you know, there is a lot of information here. Staff's been working on this for how long? Adolfo, you guys have been a couple of years?
It's been a long time.
Okay, so over a year? Okay, so over a year, so then the Planning Commission gets it, and then we had concerns at our previous meeting, and now we have it again. But I think there's, additional information's been provided. We have the aerial photos. But so I, you know, I think that's certainly an option, would be for the Commission to have an opportunity to review it, to review the additional information. But I have a concern at this point, and I'm glad our city clerk is here, and I had mentioned this yesterday to Adolfo and Stephanie regarding the public hearing noticing process. And so the, and I had brought my concern up at our last Planning Commission meeting when this was first brought forward, and that was, how was the, how was it noticed? And so we got the information on how it was noticed.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Well, no, I want to speak first, but I'm glad you're here. So let me make my points, and then I look forward to your response.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. So I had concerns as to the noticing process, and Stephanie provided information. She explained that we had it, she had placed an ad, or somebody had placed an ad in the Westminster Herald-Journal, that's our local paper, and it was an eighth-page ad, and so, okay, that's fine, and it was posted at the City Hall Bulletin Board, the Council Chamber Bulletin Board, Community Services, and the library. It's there, it's on our website, under Planning. You have to do a little bit of searching, but it's on the website, so it's there. But I was curious to see, well, how does it appear in the Westminster Herald-Journal? And where do people get the Westminster Herald-Journal? How do they get it? So I started looking around, and I went to the library and the City Hall, and to Community Services. services and the senior center, and not there, and so, okay, well, I called, I went online and found the publisher's nearest office, which is in Seal Beach. So I called them up, and I said, I'm in Westminster, so where, where do I get a copy of your newspaper? And they said, well, we have no drop locations in your city. And I said, what's a drop location? They said, well, in some cities, we have drop locations, for example, Cypress, they have a drop location at Cataladelli, okay, so their newspapers are there. It's also available, they have, you can get a subscription to the Westminster Herald Journal, I don't know of anybody who does, but you can get a subscription. So then I got to thinking, okay, well, what does our municipal code say precisely about noticing public hearings? So I got the, went online, and I got chapter 17.630, Public Hearings and Administrative Review, and it says, a notice shall be published at least once in a local newspaper of general circulation in the city not less than 10 days before the date of the public hearing for, or review. And then it goes on to say, and this is, I think, kind of a worthwhile bit of information, the director, and I believe that this is referring to, would be now what we have, the community development director, the director has the discretion to publish the notice in other newspapers, so for example, it could be the Times or the, or C-Register. Okay, so then I was curious, too, I said, well, I read this, what the city ordinance says, it says, a newspaper of general circulation, so I go, what's a newspaper of general circulation? So then I went online again, and I found California Government Code, Section 6000, and it defines a newspaper of general circulation, and it says, a newspaper of general circulation, and that's what we require our notices to be placed in, is a newspaper published for the dissemination of local or photographic news and intelligence of a general character which has a bona fide subscription list of paying subscribers. And then it goes on, and has been established and printed and published at regular intervals in a state, county, or city, so, okay, as long as they have a bona fide subscription list of paying subscribers. So I went over to the office in Seal Beach, and I picked up my copy, a couple copies of the September 5th publication, and yep, it was there, it's not real big, but it was there, it's an eighth of a page, just as Stephanie pointed out. And then I said, then I had inquired, I said, do you have a, you can get a subscription, how many subscribers do you have to your newspaper? And she said, you know, I don't know, I don't know, and I don't know how to, how I could get you that information, I don't know whether we have a list of subscribers or not. So I'm thinking, okay, well, then does, that being the case, has anybody from the city ever requested a bona fide list of paying subscribers to the Westminster Herald Journal? And if they haven't, then I don't think it qualifies to carry our publications. Now, I suspect that the Orange County Register and Orange County Times have a bona fide list of paid subscribers and would probably qualify to carry our, our information, our public notices. The second point I wanted to make is, in the staff report, let me see here, oh, yeah, the staff report, this is on page three of the staff report, said, the notice, the actual notice, this is at the top of the page, the actual notice included details on the proposed billboard ordinance, and so, and my point for making all this information is, I think it's really critical that we get the word out to our constituents, because further on in, in the staff report, it states that the city wants to enhance public engagement and transparency for projects with potentially significant community impact. So, yeah, I'm with that. So the staff report said, it's, the notice included details. So then I went ahead and went online, and I printed out a copy of the public notice and, and read it, and the first thing I noticed is, it says, project location, it says, citywide. So we've got a citywide project being advertised in a newspaper that may not have any paid subscribers in the city or limited circulation, certainly it's not available for people to pick up, the notices are at three different city buildings, and you can go online, but again, is that really, are we really reaching out to the community? So then I went ahead and I read the public hearing item, and I was looking forward to reading about the details of this proposal, and it says, the proposed amendments would establish application review procedures and standards for the location, development, and design of new electronic billboard freeway signs. It doesn't say it could allow signs up to 90 feet or higher within 200 feet of residential property, could be up to 2,400 square feet in size, none of that's there, so somebody might read this notice and say, yeah, okay, you know, no, no big deal, you know, that's just bureaucracy at work, they're just messing around, I don't care. I think that if they had, if we had wider dissemination of what this zoning text amendment is all about, we might see more than two people in our audience. So those are my comments, so, city clerk?
Fire away.
Thank you, vice chair. So first thing first, we've been using Westminster Herald Journal, and apologize, I'm a little under the weather, so I sound groggily. We've been using Westminster Herald Journal for over a decade. This is a adjudicated newspaper through Orange County. The county of Orange Clerk and Recorders Office has a list of newspapers that they provide to individuals in the county, for instance, doing fictitious business license and things of that, for the requirements that they must do as far as publishing. The Westminster Herald is a part of that list that the county provides to the members of the public. As far as our process in-house, when we do public hearings, we reach out to the Westminster Herald, we provide them with the notice of public hearing, they provide with us with a receipt that they have received, our request for noticing, and then we are sent over an invoice with an affidavit. We do have the affidavit, as you had mentioned, for the September 5th publication, because there is a requirement that it's published 10 days before the hearing to allow the public enough time to come and discuss this item if they so choose. The other component is, we do have a list of distribution locations within Westminster that the Westminster Herald actually does bulk drop-offs. The list is the senior center, the city hall, the library, the school district, the chamber of commerce, Fantastic Cafe, which is located on Westminster Boulevard, John's Grocery Store, which is on Golden West, and Pro Nails, which is on Westminster Boulevard. They are always willing to add to their bulk drop-off locations if we feel like there is additional locations that we would have a mass circular for public to receive those newspapers, and I'm always very willing to receive those locations if you have any recommendations on that, so I could pass that over to the Herald.
Okay, okay, thank you, Ellen, just as to a couple of your comments, well, it's interesting that the newspaper doesn't have that information, but I believe you, I believe, but I, so I went to city hall, and there was none there, and then I went to the senior center, there were none there, went to community services, there were none there, so there was just none, but the fact that the city, I guess the county clerk, is it the county clerk?
Yes.
Made the statement, that's fine, but our municipal code says, shall be published at least once a year in a local newspaper of general circulation. So something needs to change if we, or I think we need to maybe check the adjudication, because the Westminster Herald was formed in 1947, and lots changed with the Herald, the owners, the two owners died years ago, and it's changed hands several times, and so my feeling is that technically, unless you have a copy of a bona fide list of subscribers, then at this point, it doesn't comply with our municipal code. And that'd be a question for the city attorney, not at this moment necessarily, but something that they're going to need to take a look at, somebody needs to take a look at this, was this a valid, a validly noticed public hearing? You know, if you take, I don't think so. Again, unless you have that list of subscribers showing how many there were, and then if we know how many subscribers there were, you know, that could indicate, too, is this really where we want to be placing our public advertising, or we do need to have it over in the Orange County Times or the Register, so we do engage the community and have transparency.
So I don't have a list in front of me, I'm happy to reach out to the Herald News tomorrow to try to receive that list and provide it to the commission once I have that, and staff will always look into additional newspapers to see if there's a better way to reach to the public.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, may I? Absolutely, go ahead. So staff is, find ourselves between a rock and a hard place, right? So we have different council priorities that have been placed on, upon us to deliver in a timely manner, and as you can imagine, there are things that occur on a bi-weekly basis that add to our agenda. We, we came here once, and there was very little opportunity for us to comment, we had one-on-ones, and we're here for a second time. So staff is not supportive of this coming back to the planning commission, we really would like to stay here as long as needed to address some of these concerns, so that you can make your recommendation, you read your options, so that we can then move forward to the city council. Thank you.
Can we, can we figure out approving this with modifications?
Yeah, you can certainly, yeah, you can go run, run, yeah, you know, we can all, we can all run through our list of what we'd like to change.
Shall I start?
And then, and then see if there's a consensus to approve the modified ordinance.
Okay, I'll, I'll start with just a couple of things that are concerned. I don't know if we need 10.
If I can interrupt, so when you do, besides just doing concerns to help staff, if you have a suggested change?
Suggested change.
Would be really helpful, because then helps the commission, and I want to change this provision so that you can get a consensus?
Appreciate that, thank you. Okay, so suggested changes. I think that, I think that we should, I'm suggesting that we lower the height from 90 feet to 75 feet. I'm suggesting that we...
Hang on a minute, so we can all grab our notes, okay, so...
So the other thing, if you, if, by chance, you may not, have the specific section or page like the vice chair had?
Oh, sure.
That would be great, because then everybody could get right to it and then make the change as we go.
Do you want it on the red line, or do you want it on the staff report? Because on the staff report, it's page three, expressing concern over the maximum height to 90 feet?
Yeah, Commissioner Rose, I can help you out there. So as far as the red line that was provided in...
Red line, is that better?
No, no, so I would suggest actually making it to the draft ordinance, which would be exhibit one to attachment A. What was provided as red line was purely for reference only, that is not going to be adopted. What will be adopted is what's within exhibit one to attachment one, and if you're having trouble locating the page numbers, I can assist you there. So the maximum height would be page seven of 21.
Page seven of 21, that actually, before I give my modifications, I do have one question that is on there, it's page five of 21, it says, under section four, electronic billboard freeway signs, item D, operating agreement required, electronic billboard shall only be permitted when the city has entered into an operating agreement or a development agreement with an electronic billboard owner to allow for an electronic billboard under certain circumstance, including generating revenue that enhances public services and benefits the committee, et cetera, et cetera, I don't need to read the entire thing, we can all read, but is this only for billboards that are being, that may be proposed and built on city-owned property that would be part of the revenue share, or this is anything, like any billboard is going to have to have an operating agreement with the city?
It would apply to all billboard applications.
Okay, I mean, that was just a simple question. Okay, so then, let's see, page seven?
Of 21, 975.
Seven of 21, where's our maximum height? There, item two, maximum height, I would modify that to 75 feet, since according to the other, there's, they can file for variances still. Page 11 of 21, I think that we should remove, M4, the overall size of sign face shall not be increased by more than 5% over the original approved design, I agree with Vice Chair Anderson that that just seems silly, because then they could just...
Say that one more time, what page?
Page 11 of 21, paragraph M4, remove item four. I would modify those two things, those are my big modifications.
Remove four, so no, no more 5%, right?
No more 5% based on what it is, because it's, it's after receiving approval to install an electronic billboard, owners of the electronic billboards may replace the digital faces to their electronic billboard, however, the following shall apply. So it's saying that they can replace the digital faces, but it can't be increased by more than 5%. So now we've created a maximum size of the new billboards of 2,400 square feet, but they can come back and increase it by another 5%.
Okay.
And so I'm saying we should just remove that. And those are my, those are my two modifications currently, because I do understand that every, this is a zoning change to allow for operators to bring projects forward that will still go in front of the planning commission for each item. And there was another one, actually, sorry, before I pass this over to everybody else to talk about, the six feet, where is the six feet? The six feet framing, or there was something about framing, not including framing, shouldn't?
Maximum variance of six feet above 90.
My interpretation when I was reading this was the, the suggestion, or that the zoning code was going to say 2,400 square feet, so it's going to be 20 by 60.
You thought about the six feet above 90 feet?
Not the 60, no, it was the framing, it was the reference around framing, that the face of the sign is, is, we're saying, it's going to be this, not inclusive of framing?
Commissioner Rose, if I may, so it would also be under maximum height, so that would be page seven, number two, and it's the very last sentence that says, architectural elements may extend the billboard height by an additional six feet, provided they do not compromise the aforementioned considerations.
Yeah, I would like to strike that, I think that if you're designing a sign, then you should include that, and if you need to go above the height of the sign, then you should add for variance and give a reason for it. I was more referencing, there was also the framing, there was a comment about framing.
Yeah, and that, that's in, that's under standards of design.
I have a comment.
Just a minute, Ellen, we want to, we want to square this thing away on the framing. So the framing on the red line, and I didn't, unfortunately, I didn't go through the other and mark it up, but on the framing, it appears on, it would be G.
G4.
Yeah, it'd be G4.
What page?
Eight.
Well, it's on the red line, it's page four, and I don't know where it is, it's on G4, it says, each face of the sign shall be no larger than 20 feet by 60 feet in dimension, total 1,200 square feet, plus framing.
Plus framing, it's on actually page eight of 21, and it's still G4, and it, it says plus framing, what does that mean, plus framing?
We have to have something that holds LED panels and sort of framing.
The decorative frame around it, I think that they, I think...
Is it going to be like a picture frame?
It's, it's a form of structural support for the actual digital display. And the digital displays, they don't really, they don't come in sizes like our television size, there's really some industry standards, so it's, you have this industry standard that you purchase, and then now it has to be supported onto the pole, and that framing is what I believe is referred to.
Okay, so this is not...
So it's part of the structural elements.
More support for the framing.
Okay, okay, all right.
For the screen.
It's not more decorative.
Minimum amount of framing, like, we could, we could play with the words a little bit, to be minimum, a minimal amount of necessary to support the sign, but I would caution to not just limit it to the, to the screen size, or else there's no way of actually holding it in place.
Yeah, no, I understand that it needs, yeah, I understand, I just, you know, it's kind of like, do they need 10 feet of framing, do they need 20 feet of framing, like, you know? Okay.
Excuse me, Commissioner Hamad, if you could please lower your microphone and speak into it. Thank you.
Yeah, you can hear me.
So those are my modifications, and if anyone else on the commission wants to comment on the framing, then you can address that.
And Commissioner Rose, if I may just clarify, so your specific modification request would be just removing the words plus framing?
No, or including minimal framing, we can wordsmith that, since we don't want to...
How about must, must have framing?
Necessary framing?
Yeah.
Necessary structural framing.
Necessary structural framing, yeah, we can wordsmith.
Minimum, minimum...
Minimum necessary...
To safely support signs, something along those lines, I see what you're saying, you don't want to end up with something that's 10 feet border just for the sake of 10 feet.
Right, or, in my opinion, like a monolith of giant concrete to hold this billboard, we want the least obtrusive billboard possible.
Right.
So you want to maximize your footage of signage, you want to minimize the structure to support that, so that's the kind of language that I'm looking for, I don't care if it's two-inch framing or six-inch framing, it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
I think, for me, though, I'm looking, just to comment on those two items specifically, the 75 feet, I'm, I'm actually, me personally, I'm fine with 90, we already have an 80-foot billboard in town, so, I mean, just setting a cap at 90, I think is great for me, and if, and if we, actually, if you're driving down a freeway, I want to look at billboards that have consistent heights for a reason, I don't want random height billboards, I don't want one at 35 and one at 65 and one at 90, it starts drawing your eyes in different, different ways, and it could be a traffic hazard. I would rather have a consistency based upon freeway overpass, and then this is something that I, I brought up, is why are we measuring... that I, I brought up, is why are we measuring from the deck or the floor to the height of the billboard? Why don't we have some kind of regulation or something that looks at the height of the overpass to the height of the billboard? Because that's where it's going to be relative in your, in your line of sight. Because maybe it actually needs to be 120 feet if the overpass was a lot higher. Now, we already have brand-new overpasses that we're not reconstructing, so maybe it would be a maximum of 90 feet from the floor or a maximum of 35 feet from the overpass, whichever's less. So I don't know if we want to include some type of word like that in, I don't know if that even makes sense. I know billboard operators talk from ground up, they don't talk from overpass.
It came from the civil engineering world, right, so I'm a licensed civil engineer. I can tell you that the freeway is built upon a different variations of height as far as the topography. So as much as we'd like to say that there is a baseline, every bridge structure, although it looks like it's at the same height, they all are at varying heights. And for that reason, the 90 foot from the ground level is what we recommend.
Right, and that's just, that's a maximum cap, that is not the standard. We're not promoting building 90-foot billboards. The language of the ordinance would be, this is the maximum, you can play within that, and when you bring us a project, we'll decide if that makes sense for that land use. And I want to make sure, like, that was something maybe that wasn't understood last time, I think it's more clear in my mind now, and I'm hoping other commissioners see that too. We're just, we're putting up the bumpers, we're putting up the guide rails to be able to work within that, so it's easier for people to come to the city and get these projects off the ground. We're not saying, hey, we're going to stamp 90, 90-foot billboards everywhere. We have a maximum number that's built into the ordinance, we have a maximum height that's built into the ordinance, but everything still falls within the CUP process.
One of the things.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. One of the things that's also worth mentioning that did come up during our strategic plan when we were first talking about billboards was essentially having them so that they all look similar to one another. As you drive along the five freeway through the gateway cities, you'll see that some of them are supported by two poles, some of them have architectural elements above on the side, some have wording, some have the city logo here, some have the city logo here. When we bring you the first, the first application, it's going to be a heavy lift, not only to approve the site and height, but also the actual design, because we envision that, that design being the new standard for, for future signs to come, so that the signs actually don't look different.
That's, that's ideal, I think that, that would please a lot of people in the city. And I'm looking for words and things like minimalist, unobtrusive. If you're going to put a giant sign up, I don't want to, I want it to blend in and go away, I don't want it to be the Eiffel Tower or the Luxor. We want this thing to, you know, we want advertising, get advertising revenue and, and, you know, not be a distraction for traffic. But if we don't change the ordinance, and the ordinance stays exactly how it is now, what's the maximum number of billboards that can be built?
Yeah, thank you for that question, Chair Walbert. So in taking a look and comparing our existing regulations versus the proposed regulations, as we noted earlier, billboards are allowed on all commercial and industrial parcels in the city, regardless of how far away they may be from the freeway. So in looking at all commercial and industrial parcels throughout the city, there's over 400. So in theory, under the current regulations, over 400 parcels would be eligible to apply for a billboard application. So under the proposed ordinance, we are recommending a maximum cap of 10 billboards.
That's a huge difference in my mind, that's for sure. To go from 400 possible maximum, according to the current code, down to limiting it to 10, plus or minus something 20 years down the road, I think is, is probably a win for the city overall.
But, excuse me, Chair, but I, I think there, there's a key point here, because just as Stephanie pointed out in her presentation at the beginning, the city council, the way the ordinance is currently written, it's, the city council has the option to come in and increase it. And so I'm, I'm going to make some comments on that when it's, when it comes my turn. So it's not necessarily 10, it's 10 unless the city council says, no, we want 15 or 20, you know, or, or 11, or.
Yeah.
So I've got some thoughts on that, but.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I'll, are you done with yours?
I think so, I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments on, on those two points. We're still writing them down, so.
Okay.
Let's make more points.
Okay.
I was just going to say that per this, they had said that there were 15 parcels that would fit the, that would fit this criteria. And also, didn't we just pass a zoning change for the amortization schedule to remove digital, or sorry, bill, static billboards and that the billboards were only going to be allowed along freeways? So the 400 parcel, is that even still an accurate amount? Or are you saying that 400 is potential if we don't do anything, no matter what, even considering what we just did for the static billboards?
Yeah, the 400 number is generated based off of the number of commercial and industrial zone parcels that would be eligible to apply for a billboard application. So it's just more a representative number of how many parcels are out there that meet the eligibility criteria to apply for a billboard. So it's not based off of like billboards that are, you know, currently constructed in the city right now, it's based off of just qualifying parcels that meet the eligibility requirements to propose a billboard.
But if they point three passed.
If we do nothing, is that the end of that story, is if we do nothing?
I think she's saying, in consideration of item 8.3 that we passed, the amortization, that would remove some of those locations, correct?
So what the billboard amortization ordinance would do is basically setting a deadline for removal for billboards that don't have a CUP. So what Stephanie is saying, under the current ordinance, the current regulations, it still requires a CUP, but technically, on all of those parcels, the planning commission could approve a CUP for a billboard. In that situation, they would still have the ability to have 400 billboards in the city hypothetically.
Hypothetically, if we do nothing.
Right, right.
On, with this item, I understand where you're coming from.
Got it.
The other thing to, to note, we, we talk about hypothetical signs, right, they're all hypothetical, and we talk about the city council possibly going from 10 to 15, the city council can also go from 10 to 4, right? So as one or two signs are constructed in the city, the city council can task staff to work with planning commission to see if 10 is still an appropriate number, so.
But we have a maximum of 15 potential parcels, according to the new ordinance, that could be developed, we're setting a target of 10. That's kind of the idea of the language.
That's correct.
I have a question too.
Please.
About the operational restriction, number I, I browsed through and didn't see anything related to the content of the billboard that may make this, make the distraction of the motorists. When the driving in the freeway and some content may distract the motorists. So shall we have anything to limit it or to make sure that the city had the right to reject if it happened?
Yeah, so many of those standards are addressed in state law, and there's industry standards that everybody adheres to, and they are mostly co-divided in state law. We reaffirm some of them in the ordinance, but most of them we will defer to state law to make sure that traffic safety is sustained.
And if I, I'm going to throw this in there, Commissioner, as you know, we cannot regulate content, so, so staff cannot say, what are you going to put on there? Obviously, if there's something offensive, that's a different issue that could be enforced, but staff is not allowed to say, what is your content, because that violates First Amendment.
Yes, and in our operating agreements, we clearly state what certain obscene content is not allowed, and that is something that the city will make sure to put in all operating agreements that, for billboards that are developed in the city.
I, I think, Tony, to your point, is like, if it's changing, it's digital, right? You can change the content, and that would be a distraction. These are static billboards, so they're not allowed to change to distract drivers. That was one of the biggest concerns I had too, and I think that's, that's what you were thinking about.
Actually, if you go to page nine of 21, operational restrictions, it says exactly.
What about lightning, maybe?
That it says exactly what you're, they're allowed to do. So it says, no.
Yeah.
No electronic billboard shall display flashing, shimmering, glittering, intermittent or moving lights or lights. Exceptions include time, temperature, smog indexed units. Then it says minimum display time each message should be on the sign, must be displayed for a minimum of four seconds, seconds, or a minimum time allowed under the State of California Outdoor Advertising Act and Caltrans implementing regulations. So there's actually quite a bit that you included here for us to review and read that, you know, and it even says, you know, like, each billboard shall be designed to either freeze the display into one static position, display full black screen or turn off in the event of a malfunction. So I do think that a lot of this has been addressed to, in the, in the concern of motorists and people going past the signs.
Yeah.
These all trickle down from the Federal Highway Administration, though.
Any other points of contention?
Pardon?
Any other points of contention?
Oh, just some thoughts, but Alan, anybody else? Okay, so I've got, so, okay, so this goes to the staff report, but, and I'll just summarize it, you don't probably need to, you can go to page five of this, page three of the staff report, right in the middle, talks about city retains a discretion to expand the notification radius beyond 500 feet. So the conditional use permit requires a 500-foot notification of all property owners. So you got a billboard, proposed billboard site, you got to advertise within 500 feet of that billboard, correct? You draw a circle around it, and you advertise to all those folks inside. Okay, so what I'd like to propose is that, that we specify for these mega billboards a radius of 1,000 feet. So, so what I want to do, my, my thought is, you know, we've been paying a lot of attention to the billboard industry, revenue for the city, accommodating various individuals, and kind of the, the residents are kind of getting the fuzzy end of the lollipop here. So I want to give them an opportunity to be more involved, and we want to have that transparency and public outreach, and so I'm proposing, I, I would like to add 1,000 feet, and this would be for billboards.
We welcome that recommendation.
Okay, and only billboard, only the electronic billboards.
This particular subject matter, yeah.
Yes.
We would definitely be going past the 500 feet, like I stated earlier, if you want a hard number of 1,000, and if it still makes sense, we'll even exceed the 1,000.
Okay. All right, and then we'll go back, let's see, now to, back to the red line, and again, I apologize for not getting the, the same memo everybody else did, so we're back to the red line, so this would be on page two of the red line, and it's E5 of the red line, where it says within 200 feet of residential uses. Okay, so I'd like to increase that number, and I'm open to commission, if commissioners have any suggestions of what might be better.
Yeah, and for the commission's benefit, this is on page six of 21 on the ordinance.
Okay.
So he's referring to E5, within 200 feet of residential uses, just to catch everybody up.
We can go either 2 and 1/2 or 300.
Before we talk about numbers, can we ask the city staff if, because they were the ones that identified that there were 15 parcels that were potentials for these digital billboards along the freeways? What does that do to that 15 number?
That, increasing it from 200 would significantly reduce the possible locations, just based on math. One of the things, one of the other ways that we came up with the 200 was, we do have a auto dealer billboard that has been drawing the attention from the Federal Highway Administration and Caltrans because of the displays that they are displaying and the technology. That one's located 75 feet from a residential home, community, and in the 20 years that I've been here, I've never received a complaint about issues related to that particular billboard. So based on our extensive research, we found that 200 is a very conservative distance already, considering we have one at 75 with old technology that has never generated any concerns by members of the public. So that's how we landed on the 200. I'm afraid that if we exceed the 200, we're essentially taking ourselves out of the game here.
Okay. I will drop what I said.
Well, okay, Al, maybe then we take a look at what it states, as measured from the closest edge of electronic billboard sign, so that would be the sign face, we're talking about the sign face, to the exterior wall of the nearest habitable residential structure. So what if we said to the nearest property line of residentially zoned uses?
I believe we used nearest habitable residential structure because we felt that that was a better indication of how it would actually affect, you know, a community member or resident that would be near the billboard, whereas property lines, you know, may extend far beyond the, where the residential structure actually is. So in some situations, maybe it would be 200 feet from the property line, but the nearest unit, residential unit would be 500 feet. So we thought that was a better way of, you know, directly addressing how it would affect a resident.
Well, that, that's because you're not the homeowner that might be affected, so if the homeowner that was going to be affected, maybe they would appreciate that additional cushion.
Isn't that a question? Was that a question?
No, it's just a comment.
Okay.
I mean, that's, no, I'm, yeah, I'm sorry, no.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, okay, so, so, so I, I'd like to put that, to put something in there that it's going from the sign face to the property line, not the closest residential unit, habitable residential structure. Yeah, okay, and then in that same, number five, talks about residential uses, and says it's a home, a dwelling unit located, let's see, what have we got here? For the purpose of this section, a residential use is a home or dwelling unit located in residential zone. For the purpose of this section, hotels, motels, or other transient occupancy units are not, not considered, are not considered residential units. Well, how about mobile home parks? Mobile home parks, to me, need to be protected, just, those, those are permanent housing, you may not think so, but they've been, we've got mobile home parks that have been here 60 years, so.
We agree.
Okay, so let's, I put mobile home parks in, and then on.
What section are you on, sir?
Let's see, this is five, we're, we're still on, on E5.
Still number five, okay. Is there a specific phrase that you're recommending to be modified? I'm taking notes, and I was still taking.
Yeah, sure, a residential use is a home, comma, dwelling unit, locate, dwelling unit, comma, or mobile home. Just adding mobile home as one of the, it's a, you got a home, you could say home, comma, mobile home, or dwelling unit.
Okay, okay, I got it.
Okay. Okay, and then going down to F1, and you'll let Stephanie translate where that ends up in the other document.
That would be page six, F1, maximum number of billboards citywide.
Okay.
Which spills over into page seven.
Okay, everybody okay with that? So talks about the total number of electronic billboards permitted within the city, inclusive of both private city-owned properties, shall be limited to 10. The city council may however approve additional billboards installed, installations beyond this cap if it determines that the proposed billboards will not create adverse visual impacts on the surrounding area, it will not diminish the effectiveness of revenue. So my, my request is that we go ahead and add, let's get the planning commission into this equation, that the planning commission shall receive and then recommend to the city council. If, if a, if a request comes in, if at some point somebody requests, say, we'd like to have the city reconsider this and add, let's, let's get the planning commission involved as a public hearing. As it is right now, it sounds like the council can just do it arbitrarily, say, okay, we're increasing it from 10 to 11, or as Adolpha pointed out, reducing, but in this case, I think the planning commission, it's a land use issue, the planning commission needs to be involved in the process. Okay. Then on, okay, page four of the red line, toward the second paragraph, at the top, second paragraph, excuse me, second paragraph from the top of the page four red line, cylindrical column, where it starts at, number two, cylindrical column support.
So that on the ordinance would be page eight of 21, and that would be G2, the cylindrical column support.
Okay, so want to add there, the architectural treatment, instead of right now, the architectural treatment should enhance, I'd like that changed, the architectural treatment must enhance.
Would you be okay with shall?
Is there a difference?
I don't know.
I like must, but you could put must, must slash shall if you want to confuse people. I, I just, I'm, I'm happy with must, if then. I think must is, you know, makes it real clear, it's got to enhance the billboard's appearance. And I guess it's really not, I think that's something too, to take a look at, it's, we don't necessarily, unless we're considering the billboard as the column and the billboards and the signs, is that, or do we need to specify the architectural treatment? Well, I guess we could just leave it in. Well, we're talking about the cylindrical column, so the architectural treatment shall enhance the billboard's cylindrical column appearance, I'd add that. The billboard's cylindrical column appearance.
Would you be open to adding, it should be minimal and unobtrusive?
Sure. Okay, yeah. Less is more.
Does that should be minimal?
Must.
The architectural treatment must enhance the billboard's cylindrical columns' appearance and not be, what was it, obtrusive?
And be minimal and unobtrusive.
Okay.
To the surround, you know, to the appearance. That's what I worry about. I worry about somebody building a 20 by 60 LED wall and then encasing it in a giant monument.
And, yeah, well, that's, right, yeah, or a pyramid.
All that's going to be subject to CUP when it comes through, obviously, but I like adding a couple of words there.
Okay, then the next is, again, this is on page four of the red line.
Vice Chair, I'm so sorry about that, I'm just typing down the notes so I can assist our secretary. What was the specific suggestion? I just want to get that for my notes.
Okay, well, from my standard, this was a combined effort between Casey and myself. So the architectural treatment must enhance the billboard's appearance, that was mine. And then Casey, what did you want to add?
And be minimal and unobtrusive.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we're, okay, well, let me know when you're ready, Stephanie, if you want me to, let you get that down.
Yes, I'm ready.
Okay, so then moving on down the page, middle of the page H, the exceptions to standards. So this is the one that concerns me, that we're trying to be precise and provide developers with some, I guess, fairly narrow guidelines. I think if they read this, they're going to say, well, hey, you know, let's just go nuts and see what, see what flies, see if it sticks, and see if, see if it works, see if the city goes ahead and accepts it. So I'm, my initial thought was to, okay, let's just eliminate this in its entirety, that's one option. Another option is to make it more specific, make the exceptions section more specific, because right now, a billboard operator or proposed billboard operator, billboard developer could come in and say, well, I need this because, and you fill in the blanks. Now, the planning commission has to realize, approve it, but again, then we're getting into subjectivity, where we're trying to be precise with height, with what can be done in the way of the column and the decorations and all the others, and then we say, oh, by the way, here's your exceptions. And this, to me, I can see this being very desirable, desirable to the billboard industry, they see this as an opportunity to go beyond what maybe the city's trying to accomplish. So I'm interested, pardon?
Is this necessary, this whole paragraph, as you say?
I'm saying delete it, that it, to me, it's just, to me, it just opens, it makes it wide open, it basically defeats everything that we've been told staff is trying to accomplish, that by adding these exceptions, and then it gets laid out, then it's up to the planning commission to figure out what's reasonable and what, if it's an exception. So my thought would be just delete H.
So you're proposing no standards or no exceptions?
Yes, yeah, because again, there's a lot of detail in this already, so why do we have an exceptions section? So I think that's, I don't think that's necessary.
How is that?
Okay, and then, let's see, then going to page six of the red line, number 11 at the top of the page.
What subsection, HI?
HI.
I, I think it's I, operational restrictions, and it's...
Page nine of 21.
Number 11.
That's page 10.
11, okay, so that's just, no electronic billboard shall be maintained in the city unless the name of the person or company owning or maintaining it and identifying number of the electronic billboard are plainly displayed thereon, and so I'd like to add the phone number, where the people can contact the billboard company, people, if they have a concern, comment, question, concern, comment, question.
Do you want that visible or at the base of the structure?
Normally, what I've seen is that the name of the billboard company's up on, right at the bottom of the sign.
Good.
So wherever the name of the company is, well, that's a good question. It's, and so what we can specify where we want the...
I don't know how people can write down a phone number if they're driving on the freeway, that's the only thing I'm thinking about.
Or distracted.
They're not going to remember the name either.
Well, it's an opportunity.
But it's so important, they're going to exit and go get their phone number. So just put it in the bottom better.
Yeah.
You don't want it on the freeway visible like that.
Shall be maintained.
That's distraction.
Yeah, that, well, and I think it would be, it'd be helpful too, for example, if there are residents in the area who are being, for some reason, it's, they're being disturbed by the billboard itself, or the billboard isn't being maintained, or there's something going on with the billboard.
Yeah, or something's wrong with it.
What if we, what if you added language that said, we'll put the billboard operator's contact information on the city website?
Chairman, yes, thank you. The idea would be to brand the signs.
Yeah.
To say that they're in the city of Westminster.
Correct.
Because we are on the clock 24/7, and we can't answer as to the speedy phone call returns that a private operator might do, but we know where to find them.
Well, no, no, this would be the phone number of the billboard company.
Right, I was thinking we could just publish the phone number of the billboard company on the city's website.
Okay, but again, a motorist driving by or a resident doesn't know that, how are they going to know? If it's on the billboard, it's there, why not put it on the billboard? So again, we're trying to do what we can to make this, I think, as, I guess, as good as it's going to get for the residents. I wish we could do more, but, you know, the die has been cast.
Or black on the bottom.
So as long as it's visible someplace.
We could put a small black in the bottom of the sign.
Well, no, I'm thinking, it should be up above where people can easily identify it.
Are we trying to stick to industry standard? I mean, I'd hate to take a vote on something that might be in conflict with the federal standard, can we at least add language to say?
Sure, if it's in conflict, yeah, if it's in conflict with any state or federal standard, sure, having a phone number visible to the public on the sign, that's fine, if they can come up with that, that's fine. Otherwise, want it up there, visible, just as visible as the name and number of the billboard, should be right up there with the name, number, and phone number for the, of the company.
Would you, would you approve of language that says, on I-11, plainly displayed thereon, we could say, not only the person or company owning or maintaining it, and the identifying number of the billboard, along with contact method?
Okay.
Or a way to contact the owner, or, you know, within...
That's fine.
Something to that effect?
Okay. So it could be a webpage.
Just providing the public recourse for getting ahold of that manufacturer, that operator.
Or it could be a webpage.
Well, I think, like, the name of the operator is on there, right? So Outfront, for example, I Google Outfront, I land exactly where you want to land, which is information as to what to do about one of their products. So I think that's why the industry standard is, you know, Outfront, that's another one? Tonight.
Clear Channel.
Clear Channel, right, so you Google that from your smartphone, and then you're able to, you remember Clear Channel, you get home, you Google it, and then you report it. So that, that's why, less is more, I heard from the guys, that's...
Well, that's assuming everybody has a computer and can Google, and not everybody does. I think, I think we, you know, sometimes we overlook that fact. Okay, so somehow you'll get contact information on there. Okay, are we good to go on that? Move on? Everybody ready?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, okay, down to, this would be M, let's see, M, yeah, just M, paragraph M on, just right below what we were talking about, the electronic billboard, so now we're down to M, future technologies.
That's L.
Pardon?
That's L, future technologies is L.
Okay, well, it's, yeah, it's M on the red line, so if it's L, whatever, it's the one that says future technology, so what I would like to do is just delete the last sentence of L, where it says, the city shall expedite any required approvals for technology that is superior to energy efficiency over previous generation of type, or types, so I'd just like to delete that.
Okay.
Thank you for listening.
Tony, Alan, any comments or changes or suggestions for...
The only thing I want to talk about is the sign. She said she wants to take it down from 90 to 75, but there's one sign they showed on the screen here, it's right behind the bridge, and that's 75 feet, it's going to be right below the bridge.
Which?
That's not going to work.
Which one? Which picture?
Is the, can you put that on the screen, please?
There is a question that, can you address the height? Can you show the illustration?
Can you bring that...
And then also talk about the Dennis Dillon sign, that came up earlier in conversation.
Yeah, if IT could please put up the presentation again on the screen.
Just the phone.
Thank you.
Yeah, because I said 75 feet, because of Carvana.
Oh, the one with the...
Right there, that sign, if it's 75, is going to be right below the bridge.
Which?
That needs at least 90 feet to be above the bridge.
But that was a, that was a proposed...
That's a mock-up.
Fantasy sign, that's not a real sign.
But it is true to scale, though. It is a rendering, but it is true to scale. Our engineers drew that for us.
And it's also at 14 by 48, this new zoning would be at 20 by 60.
That's almost Mr. Bull, but goes to the freeway, 405 freeway.
Correct. That's a rendering, though, it's not an existing sign, but it is true to scale, so your statement is correct. If it's at 75, it wouldn't work for the operator.
Exactly.
And the other question that came up earlier was the Dennis Dillon RV, the former site?
Yes, the Dennis Dillon RV sign, we don't have in the presentation, but that is 85 feet tall, so a little bit taller than what we showed of the Westmarrinster Auto Dealer sign.
And that's the one that I mentioned is really big, that you can see from the neighborhood across the freeway, plain as day.
Yes.
In the middle of the night.
And that's an onsite advertising sign as well.
If that were a proposal brought to you, that would be a consideration because of the alignment of that sign, it does directly point at residential. A lot of the other ones that would be pointing along the freeway main line would not be pointing residential, and that's why it's important that we not try to fix every possible scenario that we're thinking about, because every site is going to be a very distinct set of characteristics.
That was why my suggestion was start lower and ask for them to need to go higher.
I understand.
Versus giving them maximum height and asking, and having them defend the maximum height, and I was just looking at, you know, the dealer one is at 80 feet, so maybe not 75 feet, maybe 80 feet, but Carvana is at 75 feet, and Carvana you can see from everywhere, and it's right next to the Springdale Bridge, so there's a bridge there, and you can see it from both sides of the freeway without any issue.
It was built before the Springdale Bridge got remodeled.
But even so, you can see it with no problem, going, traveling north or southbound on the 405 freeway, you can see the Carvana without issue, and in this, in this presentation, it's at 75 feet. So that's, that's where I came, just to explain to the rest of the commission, why I suggested 75 feet was because of that.
Done. Yeah, I think that, I think there's, we're getting to the point where some of these recommendations are in conflict. Would you like to shed light on what we just discussed?
Yeah, I'm sorry, sidebar. So if you agree that 75 feet is your maximum height, the language limits it at maximum 75, but you can, you as planning commission can make it go down. What you've, what you've suggested is deleting section H, which is the variance, so you now have no mechanism to make it go up.
Correct.
So you're, everything, so even if it says, okay, that makes no sense at that one bridge, we need to be higher, you have, no longer have a mechanism to do that.
At that point, yeah.
Based on what your suggestions are.
Right, so...
Okay, so our suggestions are...
Unless...
Can I say something?
Go ahead, Alan. Well, I was going to say, unless, then somebody wanted to file a variance, the variance is still an option open to them, correct?
I don't see that much, you know that.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm going to suggest that Don read the changes, if we agree on it, we can vote on it.
Well, I think Stephanie's been tracking that, but my question was...
Okay, so here's how I wanted this to go, everybody put out what they think needs to be amended, and what the process would be, here's what I would like to suggest. I don't think we're going to pass any amendments if we, like, lump some of them together, I think I want to look at each one of these items, and kind of just take a little straw poll with discussions, like who's in favor, who's not, and then that way we can kind of come to a consensus of what we can get as far as amendments, and then we could have a viable resolution, we could potentially agree on, to send over to the city, does that make sense?
Sounds good.
Yes.
We'll start with Rose.
Perfect, so let's start with, if there's no more other suggestions, I would like to go down this list.
Yeah, well, just a question, I had a question and of our staff, so in regards to Laura's question about the 75 feet, and in the attorney stated this, since we've removed the exceptions section, but that doesn't negate the applicant from applying for a variance to go beyond 75, correct?
Yes, that is correct, applicants can still request a variance.
So we can, so if that's something that we've got at least three want to go with the 75, the billboard person could still have the opportunity to apply for a variance to go above 75, so.
Yeah, I'm trying to take it away from them.
Yeah.
There's a variance process.
Yeah, it's still there.
And each billboard would go in front of the planning commission for a CUP anyways.
And...
We're creating bumpers, as you said earlier.
Yeah, the variance process is just more difficult, time-consuming, and you have to show harm, and that was one of the things that I think cities brought up to us, is that potentially this is going to harm my billboard, and you've done it for other people, so this is why I'm applying for a variance, and it just makes the process a little bit more convoluted, and more subjective, if I'm kind of summarizing that myself in my own head, and that's fine, if we want to make people do that, then that's what we can do. I would rather give a maximum and have it be a hard lid, I like the removing of the exceptions, and say, look, we're at 90 feet, and we're not going to entertain variances, I want 90 feet, and that's it, that's the maximum, and I'd rather go, you know what, you have, 90 feet's the max, but this instant that you're talking about, you need to be at 75. I'd rather just be able to, to work on a development, it just seems to me, we're half a dozen, you know, one to the other, we're just kind of mixing words back and forth. The idea is, I think, the overall sentiment is, wow, 90 feet sounds really tall, but in a lot of cases, it may not be really tall. And if we have minimalist structure, and some of the other language that we have, you may have a 90-foot billboard that just blends into the landscape, and is not obtrusive to drivers and the city and the people around it. I think that's more desirable, 10 feet difference in height isn't really going to matter, making this sign go away and only visible to traffic is what we ultimately want. We don't want it obtrusive on homeowners, that's why the distances around the billboard itself, how many candle feet of light can project out from the billboard now that it's digital? Honestly, with the technology, from my understanding and research, the technology of digital billboards is less likely to interrupt a homeowner's, or affect a homeowner, than a bright light shining down in front of a static billboard that is just ambient light produced to light a specific billboard. I, you know, one of the trades that I do is actually lighting design, and we always want to see the effect of the light, not the source of the light, but with a lot of these billboards, you now have a glowing piece of paper that's more obtrusive than a digital LED that can project not down towards houses and out, it's just, it's a reflective material in how these things are set up, and a lot of technology, and getting off into the nuance and the weeds of it, it's, you know, it can, we could... you know, it can, we could spend hours and hours and hours, so are there any other additional strike-throughs or changes that we wanna make, otherwise I wanna go through this list so we can start chalking some of them off and, and get to a consensus here.
Yeah, so I, I've got one more, and that is, we've talked a lot about the height of the signs, and we've talked a lot about the frame, and not allowing them to increase when they upgrade their sign face, so we haven't talked about the, the actual size, so it's, um, what are we at?
Twenty by sixty.
Twenty by sixty?
Yep.
Twenty by sixty for each sign, so, uh, for example, maybe Adolfo or Ryan, you know, on, um, the westbound twenty-two freeway in Garden Grove, at New Hope, the, the billboard that's showing there, and maybe you'll, if you want the, the IT, if you want the IT folks to bring that back up, you can just take a look, I'm just interested in what size, if you have any idea what size?
So the question was, what is the size of that sign in Garden Grove in the figure? Uh, I believe that one is fourteen by forty-eight.
Okay.
Which is a common billboard size, uh, and so is twenty by sixty, and twenty by sixty is also the state law's maximum, and that's where we got it from, we also have lease agreements in place for city-owned billboards that we went through an RFP process, and those were proposed at twenty by sixty feet, and that was part of the process of considering the maximum size of those agreements that, uh, the city council already approved.
Okay, they've approved it, but that was contingent upon getting the, an ordinance in place to allow the billboard, so it could be amended, so the, the planning commission could, not, not the agreement, the planning commission could recommend fourteen by forty-eight, and that seems to be an industry standard, and that's where we're at now?
Some operators don't function in the fourteen by forty-eight, so it's more complicated than that.
Pardon?
Some operators don't function in the smaller sizes, so it is much more complicated.
Okay, but again, we're not, I, I, we, we keep going back to the operators, it's the operators, it's the operators.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but this is a contract that's already been executed through the city council, so by changing and maxing it at the smaller size, we are essentially canceling the contract that the city council approved, so that's a problem.
Well, it might be amending it, but again, I, I don't know why the city council would adopt an agreement without having an idea, knowing exactly what they can offer the, the people within the contract.
No, they, they were, so, the RFP process, we had closed sessions discussion with our, with our council, we brought them up to speed on federal requirements, a lot of the things you brought up, flashing lights, size of displays, maximum, minimums, all of that information was presented to the city council, our ordinance is so outdated that it really was irrelevant, so the decisions that the council made were indicative of what we presented to them, which were federal and industry standards, and it was the larger size, so if we limit it to, to less than what the state requires, then we're essentially in conflict with that agreement and with that operator that doesn't operate in the smaller environment.
Okay, well, okay, well, again, I think in, you know, so we can recommend fourteen by forty-eight, and if the council wants to go ahead and reject it, that's fine, but again, I think we have an obligation to also consider the, uh, the residents, the people who live around these structures, so, uh, and again, I, I think we could, you know...
Well, it's still gonna be, whether it's fourteen by forty-eight or twenty by sixty, it's still gonna be the, the distance from the corner of the billboard to that structure or the property line or whatever we do there, um, uh, only from a standpoint of Caltrans, state law, allowing for the state maximum, in my mind, would make sense, but not only that, freeways are getting wider, so, because the freeways added four more lanes or two more lanes in each direction, I think the operators are looking to try to maximize how many eyeballs hit those signs.
Sure, sure, well, that, that's...
Yeah, bigger freeways, bigger signs.
Bigger sign, and more eyeballs, more money.
Right.
So I understand, you know, it's, it's, it's money-driven, but then again, I'd, I'd like to be, uh, pay some attention to our residents who have to, you know, live with these structures, I don't have to, and I, and I'm not taking the position I'm taking because I live in a, my home is next to a potential billboard site, it's not, I live in the middle of the city, near Warner School, so, uh, my concern is really for the people who are gonna ultimately have to live with these structures, and so I wanna try to be sensitive to their needs.
Okay, so G four was the maximum height reduction?
So, excuse me, so, so I, I throw out fourteen by forty-eight feet.
Okay.
And if it doesn't, you know, if we don't get a straw vote, fine, but wherever it goes, so that, that's it.
Yeah, start with the height.
Okay, I agree, let's start.
One by one.
Tony, uh, height-wise, do you have any comments, ninety feet's looking good?
Ninety feet is okay, however, whenever it is close to the overpass, we try to bring the billboard away from the, uh, overpass so that it still keep the ninety feet, uh, maximum.
Alan, how are you with ninety feet?
I'm gonna keep it the same as the staff stated, same thing.
Okay.
Yeah, nine, yep, ninety feet, so I, because again, we start there and then we can work down.
Exactly.
They can request ninety feet, but then we can say, well, you haven't, you, you haven't supported that, we're gonna go with a different number.
Agreed, are you okay with ninety feet, or do you wanna?
Oh, that, it was four against one.
Oh, see.
Push the button, it's four, it's four against one.
Okay.
So, uh, but I don't wanna see a ninety-foot digital billboard on the four oh five, 'cause it's gonna be big.
And keep in mind...
It's gonna be fifteen, potentially twenty feet bigger than the Carvana building.
See, most applications can come here, we're gonna see the project.
Yeah.
We're gonna see if it fits or doesn't fit, then we can talk about it.
I totally understand we are doing his own urine, so I was making a suggestion to go the opposite direction.
So on item F two, we'll keep with the language of ninety feet, um, the next one that I had written down was...
Five percent.
Yeah, M four, so on M four, tossing that out as far as the, uh, let's look through it real quick, I just wanna read it, and then we can talk about it, "The overall size of the sign face shall not increase by more than five percent over the originally approved design." Now, um, do you want to strike that, or would you be okay with the language of, "The overall size shall not increase by more than five percent with a maximum of whatever the maximum is we determine," so if it's a twenty by sixty sign, that's it, you don't get five percent, but if it's a fourteen by forty-eight, maybe you get five percent.
Correct.
I, I think we strike it, I just, I, it's too open-ended, and, and this is, this is, the owners may replace their, so this is all about future, like, these billboards are gonna be there for decades upon decades, I mean, they talked about static billboards being built in the nineteen-sixties, so we're talking about creating an ordinance that is potentially gonna be in place for structures that are being built that may be in place for fifty years, uh, and, and I think that, like you said, bigger freeways, bigger signs.
Yeah, I, I agree.
We're maxed out on land, the freeways aren't gonna get any bigger.
Yeah, I say delete, delete four.
Tony, what do you think? Scratch four?
Yes, I think keep it that way.
No five percent?
Keep it, uh, five percent, no?
Well, do you, do you wanna keep five percent or, or not?
Keep it five percent over original approved design.
Okay. Alan, what about you?
With me, if I decide to strike it like this, and then while, I'm not changing the twenty sixty at all, we're keeping twenty sixty if I do that, I'm not going fourteen by forty-eight.
I agree, the language, the language of M...
I'm okay with twenty by sixty, I, I, I just, I just, the freeways aren't getting any bigger, we just maxed them out.
In that case, I accept your strike if we keep the twenty sixty.
Sold, I'm just kidding.
Done, okay.
So M four, so the language of it, just so we all are clear, after receiving approval of the install, the owners of the billboard may replace the digital face, however, the following shall apply, so we're gonna get rid of the five percent, it's, we're gonna give you the size and that size maintained, so, strike four, strike M four, we can remove that language. Let's see here.
Now, the six feet, the next one she said, she doesn't...
So, uh, one second, real quick, uh, the specified radius of notification when it comes to, uh, approval of billboards or notification to the, the city, Don, you had proposed, I think that was...
One thousand.
A thousand feet.
A thousand feet, what exact, uh, let's go back real quick, I didn't write down what exact...
I don't know, do you, do you know where that is, Stephanie?
Section of the ordinance.
Thousand feet.
E, oh no, wait, that's two hundred, no, that's two hundred feet, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Uh, Chair Wilbert?
Yes.
If we may recommend, um, the appropriate location to fit within what's in the ordinance would be general provisions, so that would be page five of twenty-one, section C, general provisions.
That's it.
Uh, because there is some language that talks about how to actually apply, so you can add a number four that specifies, um, that the public notification requirement being based off of a one-thousand-foot radius.
Perfect, so the public to be notified, uh, within a thousand-foot radius? And we'll add, we'll add that as item C four. Okay, uh, anybody disagree with adding the language of mobile home? I think we're all in, in accordance with that. Let's talk about some other ones I think we can check off real quick.
The two hundred feet?
Yeah, let's talk about two hundred feet and the language of that, so that would be E five.
I'm thinking we should keep it.
So we, we kept it, but my suggestion was to go from the edge of the sign to the property line and not the structure.
Okay.
You wanna change sign face to exterior wall of nearest habitable residential structure to sign face to the...
The nearest residential property line.
Could we say twenty feet from the nearest habitable wall, 'cause if the property line continues on for a long distance, it may be like not a habitable property line with orchards or something, or trees, that really would make an impact on the, uh, the resident, but I could see twenty feet from that corner of the house, you know, if you're barbecuing or something like that, that might be a deal, just an idea, I, we're, we're coming up with hypotheticals where the property lines are, so that's...
I think the concern is, is that, like, the property line from the two hundred feet to, sorry, the two hundred feet to a habitable structure, what happens in an apartment building situation where the habitable structure is like five or six hundred feet away from the property line, right, city staff?
There's just so many variations, right?
Yes, I think we, we really haven't looked at exactly how far in some of these situations a property line is from the specific habitable residential structure, uh, but we just tried to, you know, try to assess exactly where the resident would be impacted, and we thought once it actually gets to the residential structure, that is where they would be impacted versus the edge of the property line, but, uh, we would have to do a little bit more research, really focused in on property lines, distances to the residential structures in these fifteen locations to give more information about how each location is affected exactly.
Just off the top of my head, some of the locations, you have the structure right up against the property line, maybe five foot setback, in other cases, it may be on the deep corner of a big lot, right, so who are we really protecting at that point? So it's, it's, it's tough, that's why I think edge of, edge of structure, minimal, minimalist design structure to the edge of a residence, that seems to be the standard measuring distance that we were encountering when we were doing our research, and that's what we landed on, and we were on the conservative side with two hundred, we, like I said, we currently have the auto dealer one at seventy-five.
So, property line? Don wants property line.
Yeah, I'd, I'd say property line, but, yeah, we'll, we'll go ahead and check with the others, see what, see...
What do you think?
I mean, property line makes the most sense for residential, if we're thinking about single-family properties, but there's also residential that's an apartment or a mobile home park, and then the property line is gonna be a little bit different depending on how that particular project is developed, and so it could be, so I, I'm gonna go with city staff recommendation on this one.
Tony, what do you think?
I think that they've looked at fifteen parcels in much more detail than we have.
I have no...
No opinion?
No opinion on that, property line maybe...
City staff, I'm stick with them.
They're going with staff recommendation?
Okay, so that, that's, I'll go with the, I'll go with the two hundred.
Okay.
So we'll, so we'll go with the two hundred?
Two hundred to the habitable structure, two hundred feet from the edge of the sign to the habitable structure.
Yeah.
So no change then?
No change.
No change.
If I could please remind all the commissioners to speak directly into the microphone, that way it can be heard in the broadcast later, thank you.
Sorry.
Just, you can leave them on, we're not, we're not...
I was recommending to go with city staff.
Not the city council.
On the two hundred.
Now we all talk.
Okay, so...
We are a team.
F one. F one, Don, you had brought up the language of, the planning commission would receive their request so that we're not bypassing the planning commission before going to the city.
As a public hearing item?
As a public hearing item.
And then it could be forwarded to the council, or they could just call it up, it doesn't necessarily have to say city council, it could just be planning commission.
For, for exceptions over ten, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I agree with that, staff, is there a way you would word that, or can you craft wordsmith exactly that in?
Yes, um, so what we would recommend would be, uh, it would read, "The city council may, however, with the planning commission's recommendation, approve additional billboards" and then keep the, um, the rest of the language the same.
That sounds good.
Yeah, I agree with that.
All in favor, perfect.
Me too.
I like that. G two was the next one, we talked about should being translated to must, anybody having an objection?
Must and has is okay.
Must is great, and then we also talked about adding the minimal and obtrusive aspects to the billboard's architectural cylinder column.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, anybody opposed, we're good on that? Let's go on to section H.
Delete exemptions. That's, that's Don's recommendation.
We wanna strike the whole entire section, no exceptions to standards?
Correct.
Anybody disagree with that?
No.
Okay.
Can I just ask the staff a question about this?
Yeah, absolutely.
I need to hear your opinion, how you feel about this? About this strike, give us, what, how you feel about it?
Exceptions to standards. Well, I mean, there is still an option to apply for an exception to the standards through the variance process, in staff's opinion, the variance findings are not really appropriate for billboards, and that's the reason why special findings are created, that we do feel are more particular to the special circumstances of billboards, so that's what it's intended to be, so that rather than having to make the variance findings which talk about hardships, um, you know, demonstrating that you're depriving that property owner of certain privileges enjoyed by other property owners, you know, it's very difficult to make that kind of finding when it comes to billboards, so we crafted these five special findings under H, basically to substitute the variance process, and again, it's, it, uh, an applicant would have to still apply for that and request approval through the CUP process, subject to planning commission approval, but rather than having to demonstrate that they are being deprived of a special privilege, um, planning commission and staff would be able to review those exceptions and evaluate them against the five special findings listed on page nine.
I, I would say still, still delete it, you know, we've, we, we can work through the, the variance process, but I think this, this, again, the whole intent here was to try and be specific, and then you throw in the exception section, and that just kind of puts us back to where we are, so, so I'd say leave it alone, and my thought is that, I'm thinking, based on the information, based on the parameters that will eventually be to the city council and, and approved, I think the billboard industry is gonna be thrilled with what they get, and they're not gonna be looking for exceptions, and that's my take on this.
I, I would agree, we're, we're making this a very li- large highway to operate on, so to speak, we're giving them ninety feet, we're giving them the two hundred, if they want, they need to show some actual grievance if they're gonna try to get around the standards that we're putting forward, so I'm, I'm actually in favor of striking H.
Okay, I'll go along with you guys.
Okay, so we're good on that?
I'm in favor, I agree.
I think we're all pretty good on removing H, uh, I eleven, adding contact information for the billboard operator, next to their name and the billboard ID, anybody opposed to that?
I have a comment on that. I do agree that, you know, when you're driving down the street, you are never going to remember the phone number, you're gonna, it's just, you're driving too fast, and, but you will remember the name of something, and it's very true that some people can't Google and don't have a smartphone, and so I'm not saying that they don't. Google and don't have a smartphone, and so I'm not saying that they don't. But if something is broken, or if it bothers you that much, you're going to get off the freeway, and you're going to go and find that structure. And so maybe having like instructions imprinted on the bottom of the sign of like, if there is an issue with this sign, contact the city at and blankety-blank number. Something like that to make it easy so that people understand who to contact. And that could be at the base of the structure, where somebody could actually read it and safely write down the number. That might, that's my suggestion. Otherwise, I'm fine with it saying clear channel or whatever, but I'm, I understand, oh, it says clear channel, they're the operator. If I have a problem, I'm going to go to clear channel, and there's probably going to be a webpage on their website that says, "Problem with our sign, click here."
Right.
Kind of a thing, so...
Chairman, may I ask also, since we're talking about these specifics about the looks and the details on the sign, can we have a poll of, would you like the signs to be branded with the city logo, the city name? You'll see that throughout, it's an industry standard, you either have the city logo, it's on the poll, it's off to the side, sometimes it actually says City of Westminster in addition to that. Is there interest in actually having the City of Westminster brand on the digital billboards? That would help with identifying who's responsible for the sign, in my opinion. And it's pretty common, I think it's more common than not, but since we're talking about these specifics, I'm curious.
No, I wouldn't want, with the branding.
Okay.
Something happened.
Speak up, guys, and Gale.
You go after the city.
I mean, I'm not opposed to it, you know? I think that people kind of don't know where they are when they're on the freeway, and it's okay for people to know that they're in Westminster, you know?
Better than putting a car in the road on them.
Or a drive-by.
One of the things I'm most proud of, proud of a lot of things on the 405, but as you're driving through the 405, now you know what bridge it is. So I was, that was big for me to actually have, you know, McFadden on the bridge as you drove through. And what these signs, from the perspective of other colleagues in other cities who are pretty far along with these types of programs, they look at these polls as community identifiers, that you are driving through the City of Westminster. So I just want, that is what some are doing.
And I would actually rather have the City of Westminster handle any concerns or complaints or calls, because that way we can track them and quantify them, versus depending upon the operator. I would rather have concerns over the billboard, contact the city. And it's more work for you guys, but I think that's, in my opinion, that's the right way to go. That way we maintain control.
Okay, well, then I would change my mind. I would say let's identify City of Westminster, and then delete the contact information on the billboard for the company.
It might be their requirement to have their branding on there, but as far as the contact information, I hear what you're saying.
I think legally, state law requires the operator and the billboard ID so they can file complaints, or we can identify them.
That's fine.
But I would like, I would actually propose that on I11, we say that city logos would be required on those as well.
And when you get the first application, all of these elements will be displayed in different fonts and sizes and colors, and part of the approval process for that first sign will be to essentially develop a standard at that time.
Okay, now, when the people call, will you guys answer?
We always answer. You know me.
Because you know, sometimes it goes back to zero, and then it goes back to the machine.
We pride ourselves in getting back to people. We have...
You get frustrated, and you call again, and you hang up on him, and he calls you again.
Some of our neighboring cities go straight to voicemail, we do not.
I do think that it can't hurt to have some kind of instructions on the bottom of the, like for the person that, you know, wants to understand, what do I do? You know, like what is wrong with the sign that we require the operators put a plaque on the bottom that says, "For issues..." And it can say, "Call city code enforcement," you know, with the phone number, and it can direct them to the City of Westminster, certainly.
I would agree with that. Proper signage at the base of the structure, indicating contact information.
Just to be specific, in some cases, you don't have access to the actual poll, so if there's a fence, it'll be on the fence nearest to, that sort of thing. Yeah.
That's fair. We don't want people...
Everybody in agreement with that? We can add that language in?
We are.
Yes.
Good, good safety. Last here, we got a couple more things to get through, and I think we're going to have some amendments that we can vote on. L, Don, you suggested that we scratch the last line, "The city shall expedite any required approvals for technology that is superior in energy efficiency over previous generations or types."
Correct.
Yeah, I don't think it's really necessary either. We can, I'm okay with striking that language. Anybody else have an issue with that?
No.
No.
Okay, so we can strike the last line of L. And last but not least here, item G4, which is going to be the maximum size, we've kind of talked a little bit about it. I'm okay, I'm fine with state law, which is the state law maximum of 20 by 60, especially if we have the language of minimal framing and minimal unobtrusive billboard. The size of the billboard, I think, is okay. We can always, based upon location, say, "Your location doesn't match a 20 by 60. We would require a 14 by 48 in this location," and be able to work as those CUPs come up.
Numbers up, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. It's just like the 90 feet. It's a maximum. And so if the commission makes a determination that smaller is more suitable to that location, then it can be.
Oh, also, we do need to address the framing, because the architectural ad must and unobtrusive and minimal doesn't, we didn't actually put in that, the comment that I had about framing, that was in a different section.
So on G4, it's the same one. "Each face of the sign shall be no larger than 20 feet by 60 feet in dimension, total of 1,200 square feet, plus..."
It was minimal.
If I may, Chair Wolpert, I do actually have two different comments that were made by Commissioner Rose. So on page seven of the ordinance, she recommended removing this sentence. "Architectural elements may extend the billboard height by an additional six feet, provided they do not compromise the aforementioned considerations." So the suggestion was to remove that sentence altogether on page seven.
What number on seven?
Two. F2?
Oh yeah, because it went above the 90 feet.
Maximum height? Okay.
The bottom, at the bottom, the additional six feet, provided that, that thing.
That's correct.
That I had suggested that, you know, hey, we're going to give you 90 feet.
Yep.
Design within the 90 feet.
Yes, yep, I agree.
My suggestion before was 75 feet, but I'm, I mean, you all do.
Yeah, so we're in agreement. Max is 90 feet, not 96 feet, so strike that last line on F2.
And then the second one that was not voted on is page eight, section G4.
And that's the framing that we're talking about.
Correct, plus framing.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure that we did address that, because that wasn't addressed in the list that you were just going over. So we need to wordsmith that.
So that's the structure, that's the one we talked about, I think, plus structural...
Plus minimal required.
Minimal framing. Minimal structural, or just, I think if we said structural...
Yes. So what I have down is revising plus framing, replacing that language, and instead revising it to, say, to only allow minimal framing as to what is necessary for the structure.
Okay.
That sounds good.
Yeah.
Holy moly, we got some...
Thank you.
We got quite a few things here. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve to send the resolution to the city council as amended on everything that we just discussed.
I second.
Yep.
We have a motion by Chair Wolpert, seconded by Commissioner Hamad, to adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Westminster, California, recommending that the city council approve the billboard ordinance, including zoning text amendments, case number 2024-0188, related to electronic billboard freeway signs, to include the amendments." Stephanie?
Oh, you would like me to read the amendments that were voted on?
Do we need to read it to the record?
Well, it wouldn't hurt if...
Please.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. You're okay? All right. So on page five, under section C4, adding a standard to increase the public hearing notification radius to 1,000 feet, instead of the standard 500 feet. So that would be on page five. On page six, section E5, oops, that one did not get voted on. I'm sorry. So page six, section E5, under revising the section, this sentence to state, "For the purposes of this section, a residential use is a home, mobile home, or dwelling unit located in a residential zone." Page six, section F1, revising the sentence to now read, "The city council may, however, with the planning commission's recommendation, approve additional billboards."
Okay, do we need to have language in it as a public hearing item? I would like, I would like to have that as a public, that would be a public hearing item before the planning commission and city council.
I don't think we need that in the code. Does that need to be in the code?
It doesn't hurt to have it in there, because then everybody knows it's not just a consent item.
Okay, so it would be then on page six, section F1, the sentence would read, "The city council may, however, with the planning commission's recommendation, add a notice public hearing. Approve additional billboards."
Okay, you have it for both? I'm sorry, Stephanie, so it was a public hearing before the commission and council?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so that's everything on page six. On page seven, subsection two, I'm sorry, section F2, removing this sentence in its entirety. "Architectural elements may extend the billboard height by an additional six feet, provided they do not compromise the aforementioned considerations." So striking that sentence altogether. On page eight, section G4, revise, removing the phrase "plus framing," and instead revising it to say, "Only allow minimal framing as to what is necessary for the structure." Okay, page eight, section G2, revising the sentence to now read, "The architectural treatment must enhance the billboard's appearance and be minimally unobtrusive."
I think it was minimal and unobtrusive.
Same, that's fine.
Okay, just fine. I was taking, I was writing my notes, too.
Okay, did you want minimal?
No, I think that that's what Casey said, was be minimal and unobtrusive.
Okay, so be minimal and obtrus... okay, be minimal and obtrus... Okay, so the sentence would now read, "The architectural treatment must enhance the billboard's appearance and be minimal and unobtrusive." Okay. On page nine, section H, exceptions to standards. "The planning commission recommended removing the entire section H, inclusive of section H1 through 5." On page 10, section I11, revising the sentence, "No electronic billboard shall be maintained in the city unless the name of the person or company owning or maintaining it, and identifying number of electronic billboard are plainly displayed thereon, including language to state that contact information will be provided as well." And we'll, we as staff can wordsmith that.
Yeah, the contact information can be located at the base of the structure.
Yeah, with instructions.
And you might want to say, "We're accessible to the public," but we also want to include city branding as well into that. I don't know if you want to put city branding as another point, like make it point 14, or include it there.
Maybe it should be under section G as its own point, because that's where the architectural was.
Where was that, Laura?
So page eight of 21, G standards of design, maybe including city branding, should be under standards of design as a separate point. Okay.
Okay, it could be point seven.
Seven and G?
G7.
Yeah, it would be G7. Could say, you can wordsmith it.
That's probably the easiest place to put it.
All digital billboards must include city branding in a conspicuous location or something.
Okay, so what I have down now is, on page 10, section, oh, I'm sorry. Page eight, adding section seven, or bullet point seven, under G standards of design, adding an additional point to state that contact information shall be provided at the base of the structure accessible to the public.
What about city branding?
And city branding.
With city branding.
I mean, you could make an item eight on there if you wanted to, but we want the digital billboards to have city branding on them in a conspicuous and obvious location.
Yeah, I would say it was worth having city branding as its own.
Yeah.
And then the sign information as the last.
Yeah, because otherwise they start to get, they start to go together.
Yeah.
Okay, and so if I'm understanding this correctly, we're going to add...
City branding.
City branding on page eight, G7, and then also on page 10, section...
Seven on eight.
Are we still going to change? Sorry.
Yeah, you can put the contact information, if you wouldn't mind, under I11.
Okay.
So it's two separate?
Where it originally was, on page 10, number 11.
Okay, sorry. You were right, Steph.
Okay. So it's two different changes. On page 10, section I11, adding a provision at the very end, requiring that contact information be provided at the base of the structure accessible to the public. And then on page eight, adding section seven, under G, standards of design, including, and we would add some language regarding city branding.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Chair, I need to take a break. If I could step away from the dials for a few minutes here.
Absolutely.
So if you guys want to carry on, I think we're okay.
We'll carry on, go right ahead.
Don't want to hold, we will not vote without you.
Okay, so let's see, we're done with page 10. Moving on to page 11, under section M4, removing this sentence altogether. "The overall size of the sign faces shall not be increased by more than 5% over the originally approved design." So striking that sentence in its entirety. And then also on page 11, section L, future technologies, this sentence would be removed in its entirety. "The city shall expedite any required approvals for technology that is superior in energy efficiency over previous generations or types." So according to my count, let me just count how many modifications. So that would be 11 different modifications to the proposed ordinance. And just for the record, there were three different proposed modifications that were suggested by the commissioners, but there was not a consensus to include that in the motion.
This is the most amount of work we've done on one agenda item in a year and a half. I'm proud of you guys. I'm just saying that while we're waiting for Don to get back.
I really appreciate your hard work. Can you imagine this being worked out at the council level after a late night? This is what you guys are here for, so thank you very much.
I'm supposed to be somewhere at nine o'clock. I did, I did miss it, yeah.
We will wait one moment for Don to get back, and then we'll take a rule call and move on. Can you get jokes, Tony?
Fine, yeah, good. Except that if you enjoy the city council meeting, that's horrible. You're better here.
Well, we'll get you out of here before midnight, that's for sure. And thank you, gentlemen, for joining us in the back there. I don't know if you can't see him on camera, but we appreciate your attendance. And thank you so much for being here. We really appreciate your presence. You've added quite a lot.
Thanks for making it an exciting first meeting.
Chair, if you don't mind waiting around, we can take a picture of the whole group since you're all full.
Yes.
At the end of the evening. Once the camera, once the, once the feed is...
Only if Tony's in the middle.
Oh, he's got to be in.
I like that.
And we use his phone, too. We have to use Tony's phone. It's very important.
Nice camera?
No, he just, this is Tony.
He loves, always takes pictures of everything.
Yes, Tony loves pictures.
Today, Tony's not wearing socks, so I don't know, he's feeling extinct now.
He's how?
You know, your feet's going to be really smelly when you go home. Because it was new word, no socks. You're spitting sweat, and it creates smell inside the shoes.
You should wear clean socks. You should wear clean socks. Yeah.
All right. Commissioner Anderson is on his way back in. All right, Commissioner Anderson is on his way back in. Thank you, you who are watching at home, we really appreciate your patience. All right, I think we're ready for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Bowie?
Yes, yeah.
Commissioner Hamadeh?
Yes.
Commissioner Rose?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Just a question for the, for the group here, so we stayed with everything that we had discussed?
We got it. They locked it down.
Okay, yes.
Thank you. Chair Wolpert?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0.
All right, we'll move on to section nine, Regular Business. I don't believe we have any. Agenda item number 10, Reports. I don't believe we have any either. Agenda item 11, Matters from Staff. I forgot, you need to read that in the record, too.
I'm sorry, I'm still just working on the modifications. No, no reports from staff, thank you.
Fantastic. Item number 12, Matters from the Planning Commission, including AB 1234, reports were required.
Yes, I just have two items. One would be from staff. If we could have at our next Planning Commission meeting, an update on lavender, as far as the permitting process with lavender, as far as we had approved, Planning Commission had approved the alcoholic beverage at lavender, and I heard just indirectly, and don't know the details, but had, the applicant was having some second thoughts about how much they wanted to do with the kitchen. And so I'd like to get an update as to what's happening with that particular project.
I know that there are discussions ongoing as part of the process to get to completion.
My concern is, and I had brought this up at the, at the meeting...
Yes, sir.
That the applicant was showing a detailed, very elaborate kitchen, and what he was really looking for was just sale of mixed drinks, turning it into a nightclub. And it did, it did get approved, with the proviso that it'd be approved as the commission had seen it. So if there are changes, it should come back to the commission.
I will look back at exactly what the actions were for that night. I know that the term bona fide restaurant came up a lot during that meeting, so if there are changes and it's still deemed a bona fide restaurant, that's kind of where I'm struggling with right now, but we will, we will look into it and see where they're at.
And then have something back on the next Planning Commission meeting.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And if I may add, I do know that there are discussions currently being had with the applicant for lavender, and that it was conveyed that any modifications to the approved plans would need to come in as a formalized application, and go back through the Planning Commission public hearing process.
Yeah, that's perfect, yeah, thank you. And then I have a question for our attorney, so we moved on, but I still have concerns regarding the city's public hearing process, and so I'd like to know from the city attorney, and you don't have the answer at this moment, you could get back to the commission through staff, but I'd like to know where are we at on the public noticing? If, if in fact, the Herald Journal doesn't qualify as a, as an acceptable medium for our notices, where do we go from there regarding this hearing?
Thank you, Vice Chair. I think that's something that staff with, in conjunction with the city clerk's office and the city attorney's office can look into, to make sure that's the appropriate method of publication, if it is the paper of general circulation or not, and if it's determined it is, they'll let you know. If it's determined it's not, then they will revise and make sure it's the correct.
And let us know?
Yeah.
Okay, but now does it affect, if in fact it turns out, does it affect this hearing?
No, because as far as everything that we, we are aware of, this is the appropriate newspaper. I think it would be on a go-forward basis.
Pardon, it would be a what?
A go-forward basis.
Go-forward basis, okay. And then I'd like to just pass on to just staff, that on the, in our public notices, when an application is, is noticed, if there could be some additional detail as to what the application is all about. Because as I pointed out, in this zone text amendment, it was very general, and so I think it would be helpful to our community, in the interest of transparency and engagement, to be more detailed in our public notices going out. Thank you.
Anything else from the commission? I just want to again say thank you very much, all you commissioners, for your hard work tonight. You really are putting in overtime, and the city greatly appreciates it. Staff, thank you very much for your detailed presentations and going through this process of civil government with us tonight. It's been, it's been a challenge, it's been fun, but it's really good, and I think the output's gonna benefit the community, so we're very excited. And thanks for, Alan, for being here, we just love you, and I'll give you a hug later. All right, if there's nothing else, I'd like to move on to item number 12, which is German. We will see you in two weeks.
Do we have anything coming up in our next agenda, Stephanie?
Yes, there are some additional items, so we do not anticipate canceling that meeting.
Perfect. So we'll be back on Wednesday, October 2nd, at 6:30 PM. Thank you all, have a good night.